Good evening. And welcome to the study session on rent review. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes. Before you this evening is a update to the draft rent review ordinance. Staff has taken the direction given by council at the reading of the first ordinance and incorporated those changes into the draft that you see before you tonight. I'd like to note for the council and for the public present that this is a study session. It is being held to provide additional input to the council regarding this rent review ordinance. As the council knows, we've received quite a bit of correspondence on the matter. I will walk through some of the changes and we'd also wanted to take the opportunity to give you just a general overview again to refresh everyone's memory as this topic continues on what a rent review program is and the logistics that would go into the actual implementation of the program. In terms of clarifications to the ordinance, you'll find on page two of your staff report a general overview of the changes that have been made. Clarification has been added to a number of the definitions. The rent review trigger has been set at 5% based on council direction at the last meeting. Additional language was added regarding the mediation to clarify what good cause should include, as well as inclusion of an application fee for tenants requesting a rent review program to participate in the program. In terms of financial impact, we've talked about this a few times now, but to give you a bit more of a parameter on that, staff estimates the budget for overall rent review program in our first year would probably be around $100,000. This includes staff time and approximately 10 to 15 cases, which would either consist of going through the first discussion and/or through full mediation. And I also have Isabella Duke here with us, who will talk a bit about what happens in that 150-day period that you see in the draft ordinance in terms of how staff is obligated in developing this program.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. During the 150 days, we would first recruit and hire a part-time staff to provide assistance with the implementation of the rent review program. If directed by council, we would also send out an RFP for the administration of the program, the conciliation and mediation services. Staff would move forward with the development and implementation of the outreach strategy, which would include notices with business renewals to landlords, notice sent via email and mail, notice to Albany residents via postcards. We would also build the city website, provide that information on the city website and the city e-newsletter. We would develop also an FAQ to provide clear information on the procedures to follow. We would also hold monthly landlord and tenant info workshops on the rent review program. And we would also develop a rent review handout that would be distributed throughout the city. We would also develop all the forms attached to the program. So as I mentioned earlier, the handout, the rent review availability notice, the rent review request for application, the landlord response form, the request for mediation form, and also a handout on tenant and landlord resources. Those are some of the activities that we would be doing during those 150 days. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from council?
Yeah, it's been a lot of, there were times that very often it was more than it started with less on 90 days, just to remember, 18. Do you think that's just unfeasible for the list? Are other cities doing less appropriations or something like this?
So, the other cities that have been mentioned in the past are Union City, which had already hired a full-time staff dedicated to the rent review program. So they already had somebody dedicated to develop the program, which we don't have here in Albany. And another program that's been mentioned is the San Leandro program, which has been a longstanding program that is very well established. And I think recently they made some changes to their ordinance, but they already had dedicated staff to administer the program. So we're starting from the beginning, which includes also recruiting and hiring some part-time assistants.
So I presume the staff person would be part of community development, under that department in particular?
Right now, we're, okay, right now, we're foreseeing that staff person to be under the Human Services Division and potentially share some of the responsibilities with the Human Services Linkages Program, so have that staff do different functions.
Thank you.
Have you looked at any alternatives to hiring staff to do this, about using outside contractors?
Well, part of the program will be administered by an outside contractor, which will receive the inquiries, provide counseling and conciliation, and eventually mediation if it gets to that, yes. That's also included as part of their contract.
But I'm talking about trying to avoid adding staff at this point. It seems like that's kind of a permanent commitment. What if there's not very many rent review requests made? And we've made a commitment to a staff person.
The staff person, it would be a percentage of a larger staff position. So one of, again, none of this has been ironed out because we do not have an ordinance in place, but as we begin the programming for this, one of the options of many is that the, recently the council approved, staff to work into our upcoming budget review, the human resources coordinator position, so that that person would be facilitating the continuation of the Resource Center. As part of that work, they may serve as basically the liaison between the service organization and the tenants and the landlords, because every city would need someone in-house to receive requests, submit those requests, provide some general oversight to the program.
So the $100,000 includes that person?
Absolutely.
And then there's another $100,000 a year that we've been looking at for the Resource Centers. So we'd have a Human Services Department with a couple of $100,000 with a full-time staff person.
That's one way to look at it, definitely. The $100,000 for this program includes several components. Part of that is staffing. There's also outreach, the actual mailing and production of materials. It's retaining a consultant and continuing that service.
Okay.
Could you clarify that a little bit more, because now I am confused. If we're thinking about one staff person doing a variety of jobs, it's not, I'm not quite clear why it would be then a double. Like Rochelle was saying, it was 200,000? Is that?
No, the 200,000 includes, because it's $95,000 for the rent review program, but of that is $45,000 assigned to staff time. And then for the Resource Center, I think there was 75,000. So if you put the two together, that makes a full-time person.
Does that include benefits?
Yes.
So this would be a perceval-type position? This would be a position with all the benefits of public employment?
Are there other questions? Okay, I do have a couple. Looking at the ordinance itself, sort of a couple of technical questions. Could we, should we add another whereas to include this workshop? We talk about other times that we've talked about this, but I think we should add one more to include this. And I would also like to move, when you get to section 5.25.4, where there's G, good cause, I'd like to move that up to E5. It comes right now, it comes right after retaliatory eviction, which refers to the state code. And I think that's a little confusing to people, because when we're talking good cause, we're actually talking about going to mediation and things like travel and illness and whatnot. We're not talking about eviction. And I think it's a little bit confusing where it is. If I could find the page, I could give you that.
Can you give me those numbers again? 5.25.4, is that correct?
Moving G to E5. Nicole, did you get that? Okay. Okay, are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, we will open it to public comment. May I see a show of hands of how many people here wish to speak? Not too many. Okay, we're going to go with two minutes, because there are a lot of you. Please try not to repeat previous speakers. If you just couldn't say, "I agree with that person," make new points. I just also want to remind you of the rules here of decorum, to be respectful of each speaker, to address the council and not the audience. And please don't applaud or make any negative comments or noise. We want everyone to feel comfortable speaking, and we don't want anyone to be intimidated by audience comments or reactions. And what we'll do is, if you haven't yet turned in a speaker card, if you could do that, Ann will take them. She will read out three names at a time, if you could line up. That way, we'll just keep this moving as quickly as we can. We do have a time limit tonight. We have a council meeting starting at 7:30, so it's not an indefinite amount of time. Okay, first three, please.
Margie Marks, Leah Burrow, Kathy Deal.
Thank you, City Council. Margie Marks, member of the Social Justice and Economic Commission. The ordinance before us is not what the SEJC or the diverse housing group or the housing providers wanted. I looked at the correspondence the City Council received. It's clear the housing providers are well organized and have gathered support for their position, which seems to be just getting rid of rent review altogether. I would say this, if this ordinance does not pass through the City Council, there are citizens in Albany who will put the issue on the ballot. My experience has been that Albany voters are traditionally much more liberal than the City Council, and in other areas, cities in this area, it has passed. That being said, we, the SEJC, look at this ordinance as a good start, and I don't mean a good start toward rent control. I mean a start toward giving Albany renters a little more security than they have now. We do have some objections to it. If we're going to go with 150 days, we'd like to see some protection for the renters during that time period. Either we don't do the rent increases, they're frozen, or maybe they just pay half of it and then have the hearing later, whatever. There's a variety of things. The second issue is just cause. We realize it will not be in the ordinance. We would ask the City Council to have the SEJC have a meeting to explore that issue. I've heard the housing providers say how difficult it is to evict someone. This is whether there's just cause or not just cause. We still believe that the 5% is too high. More than 50% of Albany citizens are renters, and more than 50% of them spend more than 30% of their income on rent. So, like I said, we feel that this is a good start, and we want to see this ordinance go forward as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leah Burrow with DOG. I just want to reiterate very quickly, the trigger's too high because it's higher than the CPI. Five months to implement is too long, and we also need just cause. When a tenant takes possession of a unit, is it consideration for using and occupying that space? And when a tenant pays rent and supplies money and resources so that the landlord can have their investment, at least the landlord can do is supply just cause for having the tenants leave and to relinquish the possession. The property is the tenant's home. It is not an investment. The tenant does not accrue equity or get a tax deduction. So I feel the just cause is the least that could be engaged here to deal with that issue. And tenants, by and large, are not here because they're out working two or three jobs to pay the rent for the landlords and are afraid of the landlords. So to say that there are no tenants concerned about this is not an accurate statement. So, that being said, I think the council did a really good job last time. I think we've got a good start, as Margie said. And it's a place, I hope, where all of parties can come together and have some balance. I was a landlord. I had been a tenant. I am now homeless. I feel like I have a lot of different aspects and viewpoints about this situation, so I'm looking at balance. I don't see it just from the viewpoint of the tenant or from the landlord, for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next three after Kathy Deal would be Sam Sorokin.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Hold on just one second. Could you read the next three?
Elaine Stelton and Edgar Crowley.
Thank you. And if you all could line up over here, we can move this along. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks very much for the opportunity to comment on the second draft. I have four comments. First of all, the language regarding notification of a rent review availability needs to be clarified. The conditions that can be considered in mediation should include the condition of the property. That was something that was brought up last time, that I think Mayor McQuaid brought our attention to. We need to shorten the effective period or provide protection to the tenant during that time. Fremont and Union City only had 90-day periods, and I did talk to the manager of the Fremont program, who said that they had everything in place during that period of time without hiring additional staff. Union City, I believe, had an eviction protection, which went into place 30 days into the effective period. We need just cause eviction. It doesn't work the same as the retaliatory eviction clause. It protects the tenant if the landlord wants to raise the rent without notifying them to evict them and then circumvent the rent review process. We would, again, like for there to be a special session with the SEJC or a second task force meeting to address just cause. And I might add that although, on the surface, the landlords may be concerned, they're actually, the just cause clause gives them a legal standing for evicting tenants.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Sorokin. I'm chairman of the Board of APRA and owner of Premium Properties, managed properties in Berkeley, Oakland, and Albany. I would just start off by saying that we're not looking at just cause eviction here. We're not talking about a rent review. I thought we were talking about a rent mediation program. And I really think that's the first step, is to have the proper expectations as to what this program's about. My understanding, it was about getting two parties together to talk about a rent increase and hopefully to collaborate to come up with some way to resolve their issues. A mediation program by definition should be voluntary, should be something that all parties want to participate in, so that you can come up with a positive outcome. If one party has to be there and is penalized for not participating, they're probably not going to want to do much negotiations during the mediation itself. So that's one thing to consider. Our organization and our members are very, very concerned about the concept of a consequence being the voiding of the rent increase. That, to us, is a severe issue. Each council member has mentioned multiple occasions how they do not want any form of rent control in the city of Albany. But by voiding rent increases as a consequence, you are, by definition, controlling the rent. And so, we would suggest that this be, start off as a voluntary program to get the parties going. Why should we assume that property owners won't provide the proper notice? Why don't we wait a while to see if it works the way we envision? If that doesn't work, then certainly a nominal fine would be a better way to go. Something could be like as much as six months of the rent increase. Again, if you get into the middle of avoiding the rent increase, it results in getting in the middle of landlord-tenant law, which you really want to get out of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elaine Stelton. We share a common goal, that is, having a strong and cohesive community. We want to keep our existing residents as much as you do. For us, there is a strong economic incentive to do so. While we share the same goal, we would respectfully suggest that you take a different path in attaining it. We feel a rent subsidy program would better serve Albany's tenants. At any given time, economic hardship can affect anyone. Adversity is not prejudice. When I was seven years old, my dad was diagnosed with colon cancer. He went out on disability and was never able to return to work again. If a subsidy program was in place in Albany, it could help people like our family in times of financial and medical crisis. Berkeley and Oakland have programs like this in place. Albany doesn't. Because Albany is a small town compared with Union City, I believe that we can reach out to those in our community who need help in a more neighborly way, through a subsidy program. Spending $100,000 on people who need it, instead of $100,000 on a program that doesn't necessarily help anyone, is a much better use of taxpayer dollars. For $100,000, you can subsidize 10 deserving families with $400 per month each year, whereas with a mediation program, you have 10 to 15 mediations a year for that same $100,000.
Thank you.
After Edgar Crowley, it would be Jane London, Peter Campbell, and Judy Lee.
I'm an Albany property owner for 34 years, seven-unit building. The proposed ordinance is modeled on San Leandros and Union Cities, which have mediation triggers of 7%. What's special about Albany that it needs a lower trigger? Has there been any consultation with municipalities who've implemented rent mediation to estimate the percentage of tenants who were requested? Do we know how many more mediation requests there will be with the proposed lower 5% trigger? Do we know how much each mediation will cost? Are there sufficient funds in the program to cover the anticipated number of mediations? Where does this 10 to 15 number come from? What will happen if the number of mediation requests exceeds the budget? My least expensive apartment rents for $1,345 a month, and my other one-bedrooms are only slightly above that. Is it your intent to allow my tenant to request mediation for a $68 rent increase? Plenty of property owners rent for even less, meaning lower triggers. Is it fair to impose the same trigger percentage on property owners who've jacked the rent up, the ones that you've been castigating in this, the so-called out-of-town landlords who've been raising their rents high? Impose the same trigger percentage as those who've been moderating their rents with their tenants? You're rewarding the ones that you're trying to punish with this program, the ones you're trying to target with this program. You're rewarding by giving them a bigger trigger, allowing them to raise the rent more than those of us who've been moderate. Might it not perhaps be a good idea to have a minimum dollar amount for the trigger, say $100 or $150 to minimize nuisance requests? Might it not make more sense to start with a higher trigger, say 10%, to gauge the number of requested mediations, their cost, and eventual efficacy of the program before potentially slamming the system with nuisance requests? We could then fine-tune the parameters based on actual experience and data.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Lundin. I'm also a property owner here in Albany. Last time you had a session, I said I thought that this was a moderate way of doing it, rather than extreme Berkeley-style rent control, much preferable, and that I thought 7% was clearly a very high rent raise and a good point to start the mediation. You might move it lower if nobody ever, well, you could move it lower, but going to 5% strikes me as getting into the territory that typical rent raises are. And you don't want everybody, you could be swamped. I think making this work on the egregious problems first would be better.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a property owner in Albany. And there are so many earthquakes happening recently in East Bay, and we are on Haywall Fort. So recently, I spent more than $3,000 to get an architect to get a plan for earthquake retrofit. And after we get the plan, we have our contractor to give us an estimate. An estimate is here, and the cost is going to be $140,700. So it's very, the cost to do this improvement is very high. And if we have this 5% increase limitation or even rent control, and then, you know, I calculated, I have to borrow almost $150,000 from home equity loan if it's a 5% interest rate. And for 15 years, every month, I have to pay $1,107, okay? With this limitation of rent increase, it means that for the property owner, it's very, very hard to do any improvement. I guess what we can see in San Francisco, Berkeley, and Oakland, there are many properties need maintenance, need improvement, but they don't, but a lot of landlords are suffering. They cannot do that. We don't want this to happen in Albany. Albany is a so-nice town. We want our property owner to be able to improve and secure, make the property safe. So please consider this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
After Peter Campbell, would be Kevin Steed. I'm sorry. Barbara Bernetti and Maggie.
Good evening. I'm Peter Campbell, president of the APRA. I just heard that there are approximately 10 to 15 mediation cases anticipated a year. I'm appalled. This is a $100,000 program. We don't know how staff came up with this number. To our knowledge, there is no Albany-specific To our knowledge, there is no Albany-specific study that justifies this expenditure. Couldn't this money be put to better use by developing a rent subsidy program for the truly needy? APRA has long advocated for a subsidy program like this. In addition, the proposed ordinance does not seem to address how the program will be administered except in the vaguest of terms. The "director" seems to be responsible for coordinating the various aspects of the program. The "rent review officer" is not defined. We believe any mediation should be conducted by an independent professional mediator who has well-documented experience in matters such as these. We believe this should be specified in the ordinance. As for the fees proposed to pay for the program, the burden falls overwhelmingly and unfairly on the rental provider. According to the staff report, the rental provider will pay an indeterminate fee per unit, perhaps starting at $15 per unit. The provider could end up paying hundreds of dollars per year and never be subject to, be the subject of a mediation. When a tenant requests a mediation, it is proposed in the draft ordinance that they pay, quote, "a fee at the time the request is submitted in an amount to be set by resolution of the city council," unquote. We believe the tenant application fee should be in an amount sufficient to prevent the frivolous submission of applications. After all, this is a one-time expense for them. If it is a hardship for any particular tenant, then, based on need, the city could elect to waive the fee after review of the validity of the stated need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Previous speaker was talking about earthquake issues, and I have a similar situation in that I've got a duplex in Albany I've had for 38 years. And I'm one of the nice landlords. My rents are historically low, but I feel like Albany's always been fair to me, so I can afford to be fair to my tenants. My rents are about half of what the market rate is right now. I've just had an engineer come out to my duplex and tell me that my place is not earthquake safe, and it's going to cost $200,000 to do that work. And I want to provide a safe place for my tenants to live. The whole thing of the 5% makes me a little nervous because my rents are so low that I'm not sure if, you know, if I can afford to do that with, you know, with the interest rates and that kind of thing. And I think I'm probably not alone. Other people would like to make major improvements, and they might be a little nervous with this kind of system coming in. These programs sometimes tend to be politicized where they can, the appeal process can be loaded with tenant advocates. We may or not get a fair hearing. And so I'd like to, I'm a little nervous that Albany, the quality of the housing might not hold up under these kinds of changes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm, my husband and I are Albany property owners. We too have spent a lot of money improving the property. This is the only investment property we have. We have lots of experience with the draconian, extreme Berkeley rent control. I agree with all the property owners who've spoken about with concern about the hardship that this will be on the property owners, especially the ones who've been moderate, who've been fair to the tenants, who get on with the tenants as we've always done. So I caution you to look at this whole issue very, very carefully. It isn't fair that the property owners, the rent providers, should be the ones to bear the costs, to bear the consequences of this program. In Berkeley, for example, it's just, it's kind of been a situation where it's turned around. It's almost the renters bullying the landlords who have almost no rights. And I have friends who've been, lost all their property and almost homeless as a result of being subjected to these extreme rent control laws. So I'm very, very concerned that if something like this starts, it sounds great when you're starting it, but then things change. Suddenly, it's not so moderate anymore. We've got these extreme renters who would really like to control a whole business, and it ends up being unfair. I'm really concerned about the whole fairness issue and the moderate property owners being able to keep their investments going. Thank you.
After Maggie, it would be Rita Smith, Francesco Papalia, Nancy Roberts, and Richard Chen.
Hi, my name is Maggie, and I own one unit, a rental unit, in Albany. As you know, the property owner community has been involved in trying to defeat or modify the proposed program. But I hope we can come up with a program that everybody can agree on. In reality, regardless of the program, implementation may be even more of an issue. Part of implementation is educating every current property owner and tenant, as well as every future property owner and the tenant of the program and its requirements. Unfortunately, based on the fact, a good portion of the property owner are probably not paying the required business license tax, even after decades since it has been implemented. How do you expect the city will educate everybody about this program? What are you going to do when the property owner or resident in good faith simply didn't know about the program and required notice before sending a rent increase? What are you going to do when an owner uses an outstanding notice because they didn't know there was a new one? Do they deserve to have the rent increase voided? What if the owner insists they send it and the tenant insists they didn't? Again, most property owners don't run property full-time. They do their best with a limited amount of time. It's safe to say that I don't know everything. I would assume the city will need to bet a lot of money educating the public. Until you know for sure that everyone knows about the program, please make it voluntary. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd just like to say that there's no crisis in Albany. I'm a property manager and a property owner, and I've been trying to rent an apartment for over a month for $1,800, two-bedroom, and nobody, they look at it, they leave. It's clean, it's remodeled. It will not help a homeless situation. And Berkeley runs their rent control on nine to 10 million a year. So I don't know where you're coming up with $100,000, $200,000. We're charged $97 a door, which means if someone has a fairly large apartment building, they're just to have a fee of the door, and that's not their license to operate it, is going to be over $1,000. And you don't want us to raise rent more than 2%, which can amount to $10. The gentleman that was talking about having to do work on his building, if you have rent control like Berkeley, you will pay the tenant to leave so that you can do those repairs. Even if they take two or three months, $200,000, it's going to cost the owner money to give them a place to live while they're having their building remodeled.
Rita, I'm sorry, can you come back for just a second? I'm sorry. Would you explain the $97 per door? I don't quite know what you mean.
When I pay my license fee just to be a landlord and...
That's your business license fee. Is that what you...
No. Well, it's a landlord fee. I also have a license fee for my business, I think. But anyway, I get a per-door because I have two rental units with a house.
Okay.
$97 a door.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I understand your desire to do something, but in this case, something will only create a diversion from the reality, which is a severe housing shortage. Senate Bill 912, co-sponsored by Nancy Skinner, would direct $2 billion in affordable housing funding for cities and counties. And Assembly Bill 3171, a bipartisan bill, calls for a one-time infusion of $1.5 billion to cities and counties. When I think of the hours spent by the SEJC and the task force and the city council and the city staff and all the people who have come to speak over the last two years and now potentially $100,000 or more per year, all this time, all this money, all this effort will not have produced a single new housing unit. Not a single new housing unit in the midst of an extreme housing crisis. If you're going to spend $100,000 a year, let's make sure it goes to exactly the people who need it and when they need it in order for them to stay in their home. I support a rental housing subsidy program paid by the entire city, not just a small minority of property owners. Rent review, rent mediation is a Band-Aid approach. I know it's harder and more expensive and politically risky on your parts to plan, fund, and approve new housing. Is rent review really the legacy you want to have when you leave office in two to four years? Wouldn't you rather have new homes for seniors and new subsidized housing used by our funds that we pay taxes for? Please think of building, not regulating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm a 20-year resident of Albany. I also, my family owns one condo on Pierce Street, and I own a business in Albany. I'm very invested in Albany. I want to see Albany prosper. I also want to see a diverse community, and I agree with the people who say we need housing subsidies. And this rent restrictions is going to push people away from Albany. I know in my situation, my family's considering if there's too many restrictions on property owners of selling the property and buying in a different city, and that unit will be gone because the homeowners association regulations say it can't be rented again. They're already at their maximum. We're grandfathered in. You know, it would be sad. This is not the way to create more housing in Albany, and that, if that's what's needed, this isn't the approach. And again, I want to see Albany prosper, and I agree with some of the other comments that the property owners have made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Richard Chen. I grew up in the Berkeley Unified School District, second grade through high school and four years at Berkeley. I had a good friend in junior high school, high school. They rented in Berkeley, and I visited him. And I asked him, "This place is a dump. Why do you guys stay here?" And he told me, "It's $500 a month, and the owner can't raise the rent." I recently inherited my mom's property here in Albany. It's a beautiful place. My mom and dad, my dad flipped hamburgers two weeks before he died of cancer. My mom used to work in a, we used to deliver newspaper to make ends meet, and then she saved enough to buy a sandwich shop, and they bought this place. So we understand people who are just getting by, and I don't want to raise the rent on my tenants. Because when I read the agreement, they're exactly like me and my parents. But it's gotten to a point where my parents refuse to raise the rent until they move out. Given my cost and the rent I collect, I simply cannot sustain this. I went to them. I asked for rent increase, $200 for some of them, $250. That's above the 10% my parents usually charge. My parents usually charge less than 10. Only one tenant agreed. The other tenant said, "Yes, but..." So that's a maybe. But I cannot dump all the rent increase on three tenants because one tenant doesn't refuse to pay. Not only that, the biggest cost I have is property tax. That pays for the excellent school at Albany High. We have a lot of tenants coming in wanting their kids to go to Albany High and get the excellent education in this city, public school. And we intentionally give those rooms to them because we want to help kids. But that property guy killing me, it takes 25% of my gross rent, three months of all my rent. I can't deal with that. So I'm asking my tenants to take this increase. And the only person who says, "Maybe, I won't pay," is the one with a child who's attending Albany Unified, Albany School System. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Hi, Mayor McQuaid, and City Council. My name is Brad, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide my viewpoint on the proposed rent review ordinance. I grew up in Berkeley and Albany. One of my first jobs was delivering pizza, Domino's, on Solano Avenue. So I'm, again, vested in this community. In order for me to buy this property six years ago, I traveled over 130,000 miles a year for work, leaving two children at home. And when I finally realized the impact it was having, I realized, you know, I had to leave this corporate job, and that's when I bought this property. Now, as soon as I bought it, I put new bathrooms, remodeled the bathrooms, put a new roof, spent $60,000 on it. When I count the money I invested in it, the remodeling costs, my return is 2.6% per year. Now, if you look at any investment, you look at all of your retirement investments, you really can't get by on 2.6% per year. I need to do $50,000 worth of siding work to make sure that it's secure against water intrusion. And I'm, you know, with the rent review, and I look at the amount that I may be able to increase the rents, and it just doesn't support future investment into the property. Thanks very much.
Thank you. One more?
Good evening. My name's Shen. I'm of the property owner in Albany. I'm of the Lake Como. You know, I'm young, I just started. And I can tell you, you know, when I bought a property, the tax went up, obviously. And I appreciate that because it supports a lot of the facilities, schools in this. But at the same time, I feel, you know, one-third of my gross rental income goes to property tax. And, you know, city raised that tax on me, and I don't complain, but at the same time, I feel it's a little unfair. It's become a little hypocritical that at the same time, I should be the one in terms of supporting our rental issues for the city. I think, like the gentleman previously said, I'm fine with, you know, paying the tax, but at the same time, the city should be the one that has some sort of reimbursement program to support people who cannot pay rent at the current market rate. And the other thing is that I appreciate, at the previous meeting, I appreciated the council's opinion that they realized that the rent control doesn't work, and they appreciate the fact that most of us are mom-and-pop shops, and we're trying to do our best to provide inventory for the city. And the truth is that, you know, by adding this rent review thing, it's really just going to put extra burden on us. There's always going to be unscrupulous landlord, and it's always going to be tenants who'll take advantage of every situation. But we're really trying to catch the outliers and then put everybody else who are reasonable people, you know, in jeopardy in terms of extra work. Most of us, unlike a lady at the previous meeting says, that we just sit around and enjoy rental income, most of us have a full-time job. You know, this is extra work on top of what we do. We sacrifice family time, we sacrifice spending on things we like now so we can have a little nest egg. I think it's quite unfair that we should also have to spend extra time in response to, you know, certain things that a few of the tenants or a few of the landlords are doing, and then hold everyone responsible for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Matera, and I'm an Albany resident, and I also own one rental unit. And we just recently had to, we had water intrusion problems and mold and rot inside the walls, and we had to spend over $100,000 to tear off the inside and outside walls and fix all the rot and then put the walls back on again on the rental unit. And if there were any kind of restriction on rent increases, I'm not sure I could have or would have done that. As a result of all the work, we raised the rent pretty significantly, but we needed to to cover the costs. And I think a lot of people are in this situation, and people have talked about Berkeley and the fact that so much of the housing over there is rundown, and, you know, people have cheap housing, but it's terrible. They're living in terrible conditions because landlords don't want to put or can't put any money into the property. I don't want to see that happening here in Albany for my own self and for just my experience living in Albany. I don't want to be surrounded by a lot of rundown properties like I see in Berkeley. So, anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Your last call. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. We'll bring it back to council then for comments. Rochelle, do you want to start?
Can I interrupt? Would it be useful now that our city attorney is here to have him speak, or do you want to save that for later?
Do you have anything you'd like to add right now, or do you want to wait?
No, unless you have specific questions.
Okay. We'll carry on then. Rochelle, go ahead.
A question regarding just cause eviction. One of the arguments that we have been hearing is that if someone is interested, someone is charging below market and they want to bring it up, and that's going to be more than 5%, 7%, whatever it may be, that they would have the option of simply giving a tenant 30 days' notice if they don't have a lease and removing the tenant and getting a new tenant, and that that's why we need just cause eviction protection. Can you address that, please, how you see that working?
Well, most commonly, I've seen just cause eviction done in conjunction with rent control, where the owners might elect to move out a tenant rather than be restricted in the amount of rent increases they can impose. However, it has on occasion been done separately from rent control. That would be, it would be a risk that if the landlord felt so strongly that they didn't want to go through a mediation and conciliation process, that they would rather evict the tenant, although it doesn't seem probable. But if the landlord did make that decision and it was consistent with their lease, they could provide the required notice of termination, move the tenant out, and raise the rent. If a just cause eviction ordinance were in place, then the landlord would have to demonstrate cause for evicting the tenant, and typically, there'd be a list of permissible causes, things like non-payment of rent or damage to the property. So that would be the effect of a just cause eviction ordinance.
Okay. And staff is not recommending that just cause be part of the ordinance because we want to see, if I understood the materials correctly, we want to see what happens during the implementation of the program. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Pete?
Okay, a few comments. Let me first speak to something that came up a couple weeks ago, which was... I want to hear it.
I think requests were put out to a number of council people, at least one was to me to speak with members of the Albany Property Owners Association, which I did. I think others may have also done that. I've also spoken with members of the SEJC and some tenants in town. So I'm pretty easy. I'll speak to anybody that wants to talk about whatever the issue is and try to get their point of view. And I'll continue doing that in the future on this issue or any other issue that comes before the council. So I found it interesting. I did get some of their points. I, you know, I still have my own ideas on this, and I think I can take in lots of different views and not be overly influenced by something like that. But specifically, what I've heard tonight and what we've been going over, we've been talking about this for quite a while, and I think this all got spurred on by, originally by the, by some rapid, fairly rapid increases that were going on. Started around 2015 and were going on for a couple of years. As far as I can see, and I'm somebody who does keep track of what's going on in the rental market in the Bay Area, it's tapered off now, and rents in general have tapered off. It doesn't mean that this couldn't happen again. It doesn't mean that the forces that are causing this, which is essentially a very booming economy around here, we're now the, I read the other day, the fifth-largest economy in the world in California, and a lot of that centered right here, and one of the repercussions is very expensive living standards. But the, I think some of that was the impetus for this whole discussion coming up. What we've been talking about, and I'll reiterate this again, is, I think, a fairly mild step of just essentially trying to figure out what is going on in Albany. You know, how are rents increasing? And this will be as much a benefit to the council and to future councils, the information that we get out of this as to making any decisions about how much restrictions or where we should be going with the rent discussion. There's a lot that we don't know. There's a lot that I know most of the people out in the audience know from your particular experience, but it's, again, as a policymaker or as policymakers up here, we need to get facts and information. And I think one of the things that will come out of this program as it's proposed is that we'll be getting some information is, you know, how many people are being priced out of the market here in Albany. So I think a voluntary, essentially, a program that basically brings the parties together, doesn't ultimately stop any kind of rent increases, doesn't, but just gives an opportunity to talk and for both sides to hear what's going on, I think is a good thing. It is a complication for landlords and property owners. It's one more thing you're going to be doing, and it's one more thing you're going to be adding to your business tax license, which everyone's required to get if you have a rental unit. But it's, you know, relatively minor increase in that. And as I had said before, I like that we've added something that requires tenants to also get some skin in the game if they want to initiate some kind of rental mediation. I think it's going to take a while for us, if this program continues for a while, I think it's going to take a while to hit the sweet spot of what is fair for everybody. And this is our, I think, our first initial stab at it. I can see in a year's time, maybe coming back, and, you know, maybe that 5% increase is too high. Maybe it's too low. I don't know for sure. But when I look at what other cities around us are doing, it seems to be sort of in the middle. Some are, have, you know, just a couple percentage increase, and it triggers some kind of rent review. Others say 7%. So we're trying five, and I think it's a good starting place. This idea of rental subsidies that I hear, something I think may have some merit to it, but, you know, I have no idea how many people might need rental subsidies in Albany. Maybe it's only a few. Maybe it is eight people or so. Maybe it's 108 people. Maybe it's, you know, many, many more. I think this program, at least as we're initially starting, might give us some ideas about doing that. What I didn't hear, other than the one idea that everyone should be taxed for a program like that, is how you would pay for it. And therein would lie the challenge of doing something like that. The federal rent subsidy program is basically being phased out, as far as I can see, in this country. The number of subsidies that people get in Albany has gone, while I've been on the county housing authority, has gone from, I think, 27 or 28 a year ago, and it's down to 21 now. And as rents keep coming up, there'll be fewer and fewer places where those subsidies would apply. So I think most of the changes that I'm seeing that we've talked about, I would be in favor I think the, I think the one thing which I think we should talk about is what, you know, we talked about a penalty for, for somebody not complying, for a landlord not complying. And I think one of the original proposals was this idea of that it would nil the rent increase. For numerous reasons, quite a bit of this based on a note that our city attorney sent out, that may not be such a good idea in terms of setting up something that would be challenged in court. So I'd like to see something that would get people to the table, but not necessarily, you know, stop a rental increase, particularly if we're talking about a rental increase that's on housing that isn't, that Costa-Hawkins takes off of the table. So that's my comments, but I'll...
We'll come back.
I might come back. Thank you.
Michael?
Okay. I need to refer to the city attorney first. And well, first, let me go to Isabel. I think of the, the way that the city is going to enforce landlords and tenants to talk in the mediation process as being symmetrical. So correct me if I'm wrong. If landlords don't show up, then the rent increase is forfeited until they do show up, correct?
Well, the landlord would have to renotice, start the process over and renotice the landlord, the tenant for the rent increase.
And if the tenant doesn't show up, then the landlord gets the rent increase?
Yes.
So both sides have a strong incentive to show up, and I think it's symmetrical, and I think that's reasonably fair. Now, Pete just introduced the possibility that this is not legally sound, so now I need to turn to Craig, our city attorney, and say, "Well, I like this idea, but is it legally sound?"
Well, I'm going to give a lawyerly answer. There are arguments on both sides. The argument in favor of the validity of invalidating rent increases where the landlord fails to participate in, either fails to provide the required notices or fails to participate in conciliation or mediation, is that it's simply a procedural requirement, that the landlord is not prevented from having the rent increase go into effect, but during the penancy of the process at least. But if they fail to participate, then yes, the rent increase would be determined invalid. But it's simply a procedural step that the landlord would have to go through in order to have an effective rent increase. And if, for some reason, landlord failed to participate and the rent increase was invalidated, they'd simply have to renotice it. The argument on the other side is one the realtors have advanced, which is that the Costa-Hawkins Act provides freedom for landlords to charge rent without being subject to local rent control, and that this, although it's not structured as rent control, not intended to be rent control, that it could arguably have that effect. There's not really case law directly on point. I think the city would have reasonable arguments to defend either invalidating increases where the landlord fails to participate or imposing monetary fines. You've got the authority to do that under our ordinances as well. So I think you've got two alternative methods of enforcement. One is more likely to result in a legal challenge than the other.
Have there been any legal challenges to the rent review ordinances in San Leandro, Fremont, or Union City?
No, those have been in place for a while. I believe Alameda also has a similar provision. To my knowledge, none of those have been challenged in court.
Okay. All right. Let me just move on. I want to zoom quickly through some of the comments that people made, and then I'll sum up. Rent subsidies. Subsidies like taxes are tricky because there's always an issue when you have a buyer and seller, and someone's taxed and someone's subsidized, what the incidence of the subsidy or the rent, this is, you know, I used to teach econ 101 years ago. This is, you know, one of these things you explain and you do in the textbook with the demand curves. So my problem with subsidizing is that you might, part of that subsidy might just go to the landlords, that if through some mechanism, there's a subsidy of $100 a month on someone's rent, half of it could be going to the landlord and half could be going to the tenant. The tenant could get charged 950 after the subsidy. The rent could be 1050. And with respect to the rent being $1,000 unsubsidized, the subsidies are being split. So constructing subsidies and constructing taxes in a way that creates the incidence that you want is actually very difficult. But, you know, it's something we could consider in the future, but nothing prevents anyone in this town, any charitable organization, from coming up with a rent subsidy program. Albany Foundation could do it, any, lots of people could do it. The landlords could do it. We could do it. But it's in a separate issue from, you know, rent review. So it's something we can keep in mind, but I don't see the failure to do subsidies as a showstopper. I have to agree, I think it was Jane Lundin, I have to agree, I like 7%. I argued for that last time. So maybe if it does get to be the case that there are frivolous rent review requests, then we can raise that back up to 7%, which is pretty much what a lot of other cities do. Now, here's, there was a new issue raised, and I hadn't really thought about it in these terms, but somebody in around speaker number five or six raised this issue. So it's like this. Let's say someone is renting a unit in Albany for $1,000. I don't think that's happening, but let's just say hypothetically. And if there's a 5% trigger for rent review, that's a $50 rent increase. Now, if somebody's renting a unit for double that, $2,000, that 5% trigger is $100. So the argument is, well, look, given transaction costs, most landlords aren't going to bother to raise the rent less than $50 because it's just too much of a hassle for too little money. I mean, the minimum rent increase might be $50. So that case, if you're in a unit that costs $1,000 and there's a 5% trigger, that automatically triggers the mediation process. If, remember, if the tenant wants to do that. This is all contingent on the tenant filing a complaint. The mediation process is not mandatory. If the tenant's happy, and you've talked to the tenant, in fact, this is written into the ordinance, that there's a first conciliation step. If you know your tenant, you talk to them, you explain to them, you know, "I've had to do water damage stuff, I've had to do earthquake retrofitting, I really need to raise your rent." And you make a reasonable explanation of that, like I heard three times, I think, from three different speakers, most of your tenants are going to go, "Yeah, that makes sense." And then we're done. You know, there's nothing automatic in this process that an increase of any given amount triggers a mandatory process. It doesn't. I think this process is reserved for cases where you have landlords and tenants who can't see eye to eye. And I think for the most part, landlords and tenants in Albany do see eye to eye. Yeah, $15 a year, I'm sorry. I just don't think $15 a year and the incidence of $15 a year is really a fighting issue. It's not a lot of money. And also, I want to repeat, we, under Costa-Hawkins, cannot restrict rent increases. Several people made comments that they thought their rent increase would be restricted. It's not going to be. We just are requiring you to talk to your tenants, and if there's big disagreements, then we will have a professional mediator, correct, provided through Echo Housing?
Potentially, but that's depending on council direction, I think.
Okay.
We could go a different...
But then, once the mediation process is done, the landlord is still free to raise their rent as much as they like. We can't control that. We just want you to talk to each other. And I'm seeing the city manager tapping her watch. That means I need to speed up, so I will... All right. Affordable housing. I'm going to give you these numbers really quickly. It is not true, this is what Point Francesco made, actually, we're working really hard on finding housing in Albany. I just meant, again, for the second time with our planning staff, to go over our town and go, "Where can we build stuff?" We can't talk about it yet, but there are some projects going on, that there's some interest brewing away, and including some interest in an affordable housing project. All right. Now, here's how this works. Here's the bad news with affordable housing. The average subsidy per unit is $200,000 for an affordable housing unit. So $1 million buys you five units. A billion dollars buys you 5,000 units. So this analysis has been done... The average subsidy per unit is $200,000 for an affordable housing unit. So $1 million buys you five units. A billion dollars buys you 5,000 units. So this analysis has been done by the LIO, the Legislative Analyst Office, who said, "If you really want to build a lot of affordable housing in the state of California, to really put a dent in our housing crisis, you're going to need to spend $10 billion year after year after year." Affordable housing is really expensive, and little cities like ours are not going to be building affordable housing, you know? But, you know, we will work with affordable housing developers who will find the money, we hope. But the idea we're going to get somewhere doing affordable housing for $100,000, that's not going to happen. My final pitch is this. This is sort of real politic. There will be a ballot initiative that has collected enough signatures, they haven't been approved by the Secretary of State yet, that will get rid of Costa Hawkins and will eliminate vacancy, will allow vacancy decontrol, double negative, sorry. And that may or may not pass in the fall. I think it's, you know, to the advantage of everyone in this room, that we can show that there are interesting, useful alternatives to rent control. And I think our rent review process, rent mediation process, whatever you want to call it, is a good one. The other thing I want to point out is, we have an election for city council members this year. I'm hoping, and I'm pretty sure that, I think there's good chances that we will sort of maintain the same composition of the city councils we have now, but two years from now, three of us are termed out, and you'll be dealing with a whole new city council who has not been through this process, has not sat here with you. And what I really hope is, in two and a half years, we will have a well-established rent review program that works smoothly and well enough that a city council, two or three years from now, looking at this, perhaps with Costa Hawkins gone, will say, "Oh, we don't need to go there. We have a great program right now. We don't really need to fix anything." So I think there's incentives for everybody in this room, get this program up and running, and make it work. And we can adjust it on the fly, but I'm not a fan of rent control, and I don't want to see, you know, rent control, because I, like you, I don't think it really works. But I think rent review is a reasonable alternative.
May I? A good number of you, I think, are new to the process. You have, I see a lot of new faces here today. And I think it's helpful to know a little bit about what has brought us to this point. Quite some time back, we had the Social and Economic Justice Committee coming to us with people, tenants, who had horrendous stories about landlords who raised their rent every couple of months, landlords who imposed enormous rent increases in the middle of a school semester on a family with children. In the schools, we heard, and we have all seen, even though we talk about how much nicer Albany's units are than in Berkeley, I've seen some very dilapidated units in Albany myself. The SEJC asked us for essentially three things. They asked us for a moratorium on rent increases. They asked us to give them authority to begin looking at the possibility of a rent control program for Albany. And they asked us to look into a just cause ordinance that would protect tenants from unjust evictions. We said no to each of those requests. We said, "We don't want to become a rent-controlled jurisdiction. That's not the policy direction that we want." We said no to just cause. We had that back and forth just a moment ago because we're not sure that it's needed. We want to see how it's going to play out if we can get people talking to each other. And we said no to a moratorium, very importantly, because we were afraid, frankly, that was my, I can only speak for myself, my personal perspective was, it might trigger litigation that would be more of a problem than it would be worth. So we went to a rent review as the alternative. And I want to say, you know, essentially, you landlords, the housing providers have won this issue. We said no to each of the most important things that the SEJC asked for. All that this ordinance does is press people to come together and talk. It doesn't take away any of your ultimate power to do what you wish to do with your property. It just says, "You have to talk to the tenants about it." And there's no, it's frustrating to hear people talking about their concerns about rent control, people saying, "Well, you know, we really don't want rent review, we want rent mediation." And someone else said, "Well, we don't want rent review or rent mediation. We don't want any of that." We're way down this path. Nothing is going to take away your property rights, and I really think that you, as a group, should be supportive. And if we can't get something that works, I think you're going to face something going on the ballot. That's the ultimate problem that you face. You should work with the tenant community. You're not losing here. If anything, you're winning. I continue to have serious reservations about the administration of this, but I'd like to see it go forward. I do not want to make changes or hold up anything further based on litigation threats. If there is a legal problem, I think that we should discuss it in closed session. And we should do the right thing policy-wise for the city, based on the policy, not on the litigation, unless we meet in closed session and we feel we have to make changes.
I still think after two years of this, it's still really hard. But I have to agree with council, that we have put a lot of time and energy and really thought this through and talked about it. But I have a little different perspective. I would like to request that we do meet with outside counsel, that we talk to a, and Craig, you can help me with the right term, property, land, attorney, whatever.
Yeah, I think the proper individual, if you'd like to have some specialized legal input on this, would be somebody who is familiarity with local government and also has been involved in putting together other rent review programs and has had an opportunity to analyze in detail the statutory and case law applicable to these programs.
I just think that would be a good step for us to take, just so that we're really sure that we've got all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. As Michael said, you know, we are, we understand we need more housing, but it's amazing how long that takes. But we are working on it. I am a little bit intrigued by this whole idea of rent subsidy. It might be worth taking a look at, just to see what it would look like, taking an educated look at it. I think that would be a good idea. That's pretty much all I have. So it seems like if council is in support of having outside counsel work with us on this, we'll kind of, where we are, we'll just, we'll have to wait.
Yeah, I think some of the issues that were brought up, I would agree with Rochelle's comments that I am not interested in exposing the city to any lawsuits because of some wording in our resolution. I think there would be ways to get around that that would still get the message over that we want everyone to come and talk about it. So if it would take a closed session and require it outside counsel, that might be a good idea.
Do we need a motion on an outside counsel?
Staff has authority to retain outside counsel up to $25,000. This would not exceed that amount, so if that's a consensus direction, then we can proceed to retain a qualified counsel and schedule a closed session to discuss the threat in litigation.
About that schedule, so we are going to have to retain attorney, meet with him in closed session, and then have a second reading. So what are we looking at, a month or two, or?
We could, the closed session could happen at the next meeting on the 21st.
I think we have another closed session item that evening.
I'm not sure. We likely have two closed sessions, session items are ready for the 21st. We can look at priorities. Some of those may have more time-sensitive nature to them. So we'd probably be looking to June as an option, and then a second reading or any other direction in terms of how the ordinance moves forward.
Okay. Does that sound okay to you?
So conceivably, a second reading would be sometime in June.
Just depends on how your schedule works out. Could be late June, early July.
Is that the direction, is that all the direction you need at this point? Okay, great. And with that, we will close the workshop.
If I may, very quickly, Mayor, while I have everyone in the room, I just want to remind you on this topic, to please sign up on our website for the e-notification. You basically just go to our website main page, and you see up in this right corner, "e-notification." You click on that, and you subscribe with some very simple information, and you scroll down to the box that says "Rent Review." That will make sure that you are notified when this is on a council agenda. We want to make sure that everybody is aware moving forward. The postcard continuation may not occur for every meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn. We have about eight minutes before council starts at 7:30. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for sharing your views with us. starts at 7:30. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for sharing your views with us. Okay, and you're doing the pledge. You're sitting, you're busy tonight. Good evening. Good evening. I would like to call to order the Albany City Council meeting for May 7, 2018. Please join, council, or, excuse me, please join Vice Mayor Nason in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the nation for which it stands, unalienable, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Councilmember Pilch?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Here.
Mayor McQuaid?
Here.
We have several ceremonial matters this evening. We'll start with Older Americans' Month proclamation. Vice Mayor Nason will, will give that. If there's someone in the audience to receive, we'd be absolutely, we'd be happy to have you come up.
We'd be happy to have all of you come up. Everybody up. This is the City of Albany proclamation in honor of Older Americans' Month. Whereas, the City of Albany includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas, the City of Albany is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers. And whereas, we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age. And whereas, the City of Albany can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting, one, home and community-based services that support independent living; two, involving adults in community-planning events and other activities; and three, providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council does hereby recognize May 2018 as Older Americans' Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as influential and vital parts of our community.
Good evening, Mayor McQuaid and City Council members. My name is Margie Carr and I am the current president of the Friends of Albany seniors, and that is the FOAS. On behalf of the Albany Senior Center and all of its seniors and the FOAS members, I accept this proclamation with great honor, and we're all very appreciative of this recognition. The Albany Senior Center is a great place to be and offers all of us an opportunity to stay active, healthy, and engaged in our community. I'd like to introduce some of our senior family tonight that are here with us. Would the following people please raise their hands? Sid Schoenfeld, our supervisor of the Albany Senior Center; Jackie Armstrong, FOAS Second Vice President and lifelong resident of Albany; Zion Lee, Senior Center Staff Member and FOAS member; Judy Cohen, FOAS Treasurer; Harry Schrebergel, FOAS Member; Tricia Clark, FOAS Member; Annette Ashadito, FOAS Member; Anne Bednarzic, FOAS Member; Linda Wong, FOAS Member; and Maya Metzehura, FOAS Member. Thank you once again for this recognition and support of our seniors. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for coming this evening.
I missed two people. I missed our ex-mayor, Alan, and I also missed Ann, our librarian, Alan, Ann, from the senior set.
Okay, we also have this evening Affordable Housing Week proclamation. Councilmember Moss will present that to Josh Levin of EPO, East Bay Housing Organizations.
So, City of Albany proclamation in recognition of Affordable Housing Week, May 10 through the 20th, 2018. Whereas, quality affordable housing is the foundation for health, economic stability, and educational opportunity. And whereas, affordable homes can be a solution to homelessness and provide support to seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities. And whereas, development of affordable homes close to public transit and jobs will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and strengthen the economy by providing low-income families better access to opportunities and urban amenities. And whereas, rising housing costs and economic factors have led to increasing displacement, overcrowding, and homelessness. And whereas, nonprofit organizations, local jurisdictions, community organizations, and many others continue to respond to the need by providing homes and shelter for low-income people and those with special needs. And whereas, the East Bay Housing Organizations is a member-driven organization working to preserve, protect, and create affordable housing opportunities in the Bay Area. And EPO is leading the celebration of Affordable Housing Week and recognizing the collective work of its members to solve the affordable housing crisis and stabilize communities. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby recognizes May 10 through the 20th as of annual Affordable Housing Week in the City of Albany. Be it further proclaimed that the city will continue to work collaboratively to secure sustainable funding and support for affordable housing in the local, regional, and state level, and will encourage residents of Albany to participate in Affordable Housing Week activities.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Levin. I'm the Policy Director with East Bay Housing Organizations. And on behalf of EPO, we'd like to express our great thanks and appreciation to the City Council for recognizing EPO and Affordable Housing Week, and really, everybody who is working to protect, preserve, and expand affordable housing opportunities for low-income people throughout the East Bay. We also very much appreciate the work that the City of Albany has been doing to address affordable housing issues here in this city, and the work of all of the local activists who've been part of that. And we certainly look forward to continuing to work with the city to move things forward. We want to invite all of you to our kickoff event this Thursday evening, and we've just sent information around and hope that everybody, the council and members of the public, can participate. We have 15 different events going on next week around the East Bay, workshops, and panels, and tours of affordable housing. So we hope people can take advantage of this and learn a bit more about what's going on. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And also, please accept my apology. I not only got your last name wrong, I got your first name wrong also. So I do apologize for that. I do have a statement on the murder of Rafael Fuentes Lee. The violence that our community experienced a week ago Sunday was deeply disturbing. On behalf of the City of Albany, I want to express my sincere condolences to the family and friends of Rafael Fuentes Lee as they cope with this tragedy. The sense of safety and well-being of our community is extremely important to me as mayor and to all of the City Council members. I was in daily contact with the Chief of Police to receive updates on the status of the investigation, and I was pleased to hear when the arrests were made. I want to express my thanks to the members of the public who assisted the police department in quickly identifying the people allegedly responsible for this crime. I also wish to thank the Albany Police Department for their tireless and professional work to apprehend the suspects. I realize that some people are frightened and concerned about the safety of their families. A member of our community was murdered in broad daylight in one of our parks. It is unacceptable, and we must all do everything we can to cultivate a safe, caring, community environment for Albany. Please keep Rafael Fuentes Lee and his family in your thoughts as we grieve the loss of one of our community members. There are still a lot of unanswered questions about what actually happened, and if anyone has further information, please contact the Albany Police Department at 525-7300. Consent calendar. I do believe that we have set a record this evening with items on the consent calendar, one of which we're all very proud. Any member of council wish to pull an item? Nick?
Yes. It should be quick, but I want to pull 1, 15, 16, and 18.
I'm sorry, 1?
Yeah, that's 5-1, 5-15, 5-16, and 5-18.
All right, other council members? I'm going to pull 5-10. Does any member of the public wish to pull an item? Okay, Nick, how about 1?
Sure. I think that staff has already corrected the minutes, and you have a new copy on the day. It's just a small correction to some statements I had made in the past meeting. And item 5-15 is, I just, I had some concerns about this, but I spoke with staff, with Victor, about this just before the meeting, and it looks like he's done an outstanding job of putting this together and actually will likely be able to get us some cost savings over the, over the figures stated here. It's also something that is be very, well, necessary be, in the event of a disaster, to have the digital services upon which we so much rely these days be replicated elsewhere so we can switch over to them at a moment's notice in the event of damage to buildings around here. So, that's all I had to say about that one. 5-16, I just, I wanted to ask staff if we have a, if we have a form of policy about planning fee, planning application fee waivers or not?
Our policy is to bring it to the City Council.
Okay.
And it's a pretty rare event. I think the Solano Stroll, and Little League parades, and triathlons are the only events that, off the top of my mind, that we've done this in the past.
Yeah, and I can see, I can see reasons for, for making a waiver, absolutely. I think in the staff report, it was cited that the Solano Stroll also gets a waiver, which was a little bit surprising to me since that's such a big event and involves a lot of, a lot of funds, but it's also something that's very good for the city. So, in that respect, I can see the reason why we do the waiver. But I just thought that maybe, and I can cite this again under future agenda items, I might just, we might just want to talk about the policy for fee waivers for the future, just so that we understand, you know, how we weigh waiving or not.
To speak to that issue, I had a question about, would they have had to have paid, I think it was $1,650, for everything, every time there was an event out there, or was that a, would have been a one-time fee to cover all future events?
It would be how we frame the application. So, it's, the fee is for the application. It could, there could be, in this case, we knew there were going to be multiple events. And if it were only to be, if the application was only for one particular event, and then there would be another one later on, that each one would have to pay. It's basically a processing fee to cover the, the staff costs of, of preparing the application, reviewing the public notices and postage and so forth.
Yeah. I guess that's my, my point, that there is staff time involved, and so you want to recoup some of that. But I just thought we should talk more and maybe formalize the process, again, that future agenda item. And the same, that goes the same as for 5-18, where we have a encroachment permit fee waiver. And so, I just, you know, I don't need to say anything more. I don't oppose this action here. I just want to say that in the future, I'd love to talk more about it.
Before we move off of 5-16, I'd like to make a comment commending the organization Love the Bulb for the absolutely tremendous events that they are putting on out at the bulb. I think it's a benefit to everyone who attends. It's open to all, and they're very interesting, creative events that draw people of all ages. It's really fun to see really little kids and elderly people together enjoying the art and nature at the bulb. And Susan Moffett is here, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Yes, here, here. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. Do you want to pull? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know that. Okay. Would you like to come up and address 5-15?
Yeah, as you know, I'm Brian Beal. It turns out I'm a cloud computing expert, and I have written and implemented disaster recovery plans for three companies, including Wells Fargo. And I saw this on the agenda today, and I was shocked to see. And I understand the circumstances. Someone probably realized, you know, hey, we don't have a disaster recovery plan. But $60,000 a year looked to me like a lot, based on what I know. And, you know, obviously I haven't looked into it in detail, but particularly I was alarmed by the statement, no bid contract. So, I think there's more discussion is needed on this item and be really explicit on what's going on, unless I miss something and it happened at a previous meeting. But this sounds like a lot of money.
Yeah, so I could address that a little bit, because that's exactly some of the things that I spoke with Victor about. I asked him about the, excuse me, about the no bid contract. And actually, he started out with evaluating three companies, but due to the stringent requirements of hosting the disaster recovery for the police department, and for the fire department, and for cities in general, where certain certifications are needed, it's one reason why he narrowed the field down to the one, to the one company. And it's also a company that is being used by other cities as well, or other, in particular, more importantly, other police departments who have maybe the most stringent requirements on certifications, et cetera. And, and the cost did worry me a little bit, but I'm glad I brought it up because Victor was able to look at some of the services that were going to be in a disaster recovery mode, and realized that some of them did not need to be in a disaster recovery. They were servers that were not critical, did not have critical functions, and can be removed from the list. And that's why likely the implementation will be less money than what's on the calendar here.
Thank you. I pulled 5-10 because I want to give a special shout-out to Albany Police Reserve Officer Sergeant George Krebs. He's had, he just celebrated his 35th year of volunteer service for the Albany Police Department. It's a remarkable achievement, and it's a wonderful gift that he's given to our community. So, thank you Sergeant Krebs for your service to Albany. Okay, takes us to... I'm sorry? Sure, come on up.
Albany resident Alan Maris. I've been here for 40 years in Albany and really appreciate what George has done for our community. He's made a tremendous commitment. We've seen him at a lot of events. So, thank you for providing this proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Good of the City. Good of the City is a time for persons desiring to address the City Council on an item that is not is not on the agenda. Please note, city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take in or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such, what?
Oh, constant.
Well, let me finish this, and then we'll go back and vote. I got my own. Such items are normally referred to staff, and since staff has now reminded me that we need to vote on the consent, can I get a motion, please?
No, moved. Second.
Hold a council?
I'm sorry, you moved, and?
You can give it to either.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now that you understand about Good of the City, do you have any speaker cards?
Yes.
Great.
Sam Sorokin and Jeremiah.
Okay, Sam is not here, is there another one? Jeremiah, okay.
Can you use Sam's three minutes?
No.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Jeremiah, and this sign I'm holding here, and this one I'm wearing right here, is for the teachers and all the union workers. I know Farmer John over at the Giljack Farm is the one paid employee by the University of Village to keep the farm open to the entire community for free, to Albany, to the public. And it's all free vegetables there, it's donation-based, it's, so this is for support for them, and it's a big deal, because I'm in the union, and I'm in the International Longshore Warehousing Union, I'm a longshoreman, so I know how important it is to keep your job. I've been out of work four years, and I go back to work next month, and I still have my job, so unions are wonderful. So, here we go. I'm here also to talk about school zones for Albany. I was reviewing my emails, and I found emails that I've been coming to city council meetings since 2011 regarding school zones, just to make a simple positive suggestion for our community. I've got emails here from Nicole Almagor, I believe she was the city manager a little while ago, this was in 2014, supporting amending the Albany City Municipal Code to include school zones in Albany. And I've gathered over 1,000 Albany residents, and turned their signatures in to the city clerk. Once I reach 5% of the city, I'm able to turn it into a measure, so the city, the public can vote yes or no on school zones, because I've been doing this since 2011, and it's 2018 now, so it's been many years. And school zones is a great thing for our city. It's one of the only cities in the Bay Area that doesn't have school zones in our municipal code. I have an email here from Jerry Brown saying it's probably something just simply overlooked by the city, and an email directly from Jerry Brown, Governor, Governor of California, says the decision-making authority for your matter described rests entirely with the city of Albany. Governor Brown values your perspective, and he is committed to honoring the role and responsibility of these local elected officials. We continue working with you, with your local representatives, to see that your concerns are properly addressed. And here it says, "Government works best when people actively participate by voicing their opinions to their elected officials who represent them." So, when I got this email in 2011, I figured the best way for me to get these school zones is to actively participate by voicing my opinion here at the city council meeting to my elected officials who represent me, and it's been since 2011, so I hope we can get school zones as part of the municipal code book.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
And you're very welcome. And also, I've been in touch with PTA.
Jeremiah, it's time for you to stop, it's, you've gone over your three minutes.
I'm going over, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, the last thing is, just, this is really important, is there's a thing in the patch, and it misled the public. It says, "Back to school, Albany police conducting enforcement to keep students safe." It says, "Police officials ask that you practice good safety habits when driving in school zones." But Albany doesn't have school zones.
Okay, thank you, we hear you.
So, everybody thinks that, oh, everything's great, and we have school zones, but it sounds great, though. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
You guys can make copies for all those, please. If you would, Nick, take care of that.
Alan, come on up.
Alan Maris, Albany resident, member of Diverse Housing Working Group. In recognition of Affordable Housing Week, I'd like to thank you for starting your report and research on providing affordable housing in Albany, and I'm looking forward to receiving that report, so the public's aware of what Albany is able to do to provide affordable housing in Albany. Sooner the better, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, councilmember reports on meetings attended, announcements of future meetings, city manager report and comments. We'll start with councilmember Moss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The two big meetings that I attended in the last couple of weeks since our last council meeting, Waste Management, Energy Council, and Recycling Board met on the 25th. The main action items were approval of legislative positions. These were positions related to their main agenda, which is producer responsibility, organics, and packaging material and recycling. There was also a presentation of their budget for the next year. And finally, a update on China's National Sword Program, which is having a huge effect on the mixed paper recycling market all over the world, but particularly in this country. I think the takeaway I'm getting from that is that sometime in the future, and I don't know if this is the near future or slightly more distant future, we will be talking to our waste management or some future carrier about separation of recycling materials. China's getting very picky about what they'll take. They don't want any more contaminated mixed paper, and that's, I think, 35% of the bulk weight of recycling materials. So, a program like Berkeley has, where you separate bottles and cans and plastic from your paper, might be something we're going to have to be looking at all over the county, or actually all over the country, if we want to keep this stuff out of the landfill. I was also at Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting on the 26th of April. Again, this was a lot of discussion around their legislative positions and what's going on. Big discussion over a pending bill that I think has been brought up before in this council. I think the bill's called the Voter Transparency, it's all about corporate profits, and nobody's going to get to get another soda tax pass bill, which will be on the November election. It would essentially make passing any kind of local bonds or tax measures very difficult, raising the bar to 2/3 for just about everything. So, hopefully that doesn't pass, and local communities can, you know, tax themselves as we see fit, as we need to. There was also a follow-up on what I think Councilmember Pilch got at the Projects and Programs meeting about spending our BBB and vehicle registration fees money in a timely fashion. Albany, if you look at just percentages, we're way behind, but it suggested that we consider starting bidding processes for projects before we actually have the money in hand, and that might help speed up the process of, you know, getting these things going. There's lots of reasons why this happens, but, and then finally, Alada was introduced as a new member of the Albany, of the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and it was told to me that she will be specifically working on issues around small cities, and helping Albany, Piedmont, and Emeryville get their funds in a timely way. We just have to spend it.
Question, Pete, about the recycling, was there any talk about creating markets, creating local markets, California markets for recycling?
Not yet, and sort of the general feeling is, is that a lot of the, especially with this paper recycling, it's such a huge investment in those companies, and is so far fairly toxic that nobody is likely to take it on, particularly in California. Now, it could be done elsewhere. I think for a long time, the thought was, well, China doesn't want it anymore, because their economy has reached a point that they don't need to do this, but, you know, Vietnam or Bangladesh will take up the slack. Apparently, everybody's raising the bar as to what this stuff, you know, what they'll take, and this could change a lot of things. I mean, it, you know, we might have to start looking about what materials go into packaging and processing, and start having restrictions on what, you know, producers can put out there.
Thanks.
We'll see.
Thank you. Other meetings attended, we'll start with you, Nick.
Let's see, just briefly, there was a East Bay Community Energy meeting, and the most significant item that came out of that was the board voted to have, to direct staff to create a 100% renewable product. Currently, we have the default product, which is not all greenhouse gas-free, we have the greenhouse gas-free product, which is the premium, the Brilliant 100, and now we are going to have the platinum product, which will be the all-renewable product at a, at some elevated price to the PG&E prices, not yet determined, I believe. And I also attended the police swearing-in ceremony this past Sunday, and I believe Council Vice Mayor Nason and Mayor McQuaid were there as well.
Rochelle, do you have anything?
The only, the only thing out of the ordinary that I would describe is the, I attended the Senior Resource Fair, and was really positively impressed with the way, the level of participation this year. I think it's pretty clear, we're getting to be older here in Albany, and there are a tremendous number of services being offered. I encourage people to get involved.
It still beats the alternative.
It beats the alternative, exactly.
Michael, do you have anything? You went to England.
Yeah.
Share that, just keep going.
Well, I'll just make it quick, because people think we have mass transit here, then after you see how well the British and English train system works around London, you realize we don't have public transportation in America. So, that was eye-opening, but I did meet, the mayor and I were scheduled to meet with Jeff Bond and Ann Hirsch, and the mayor had to cancel, but I did meet with them, just to discuss housing opportunities in our little town, and that was very interesting and productive.
Okay, I did have my community leaders meeting, which this time I invited staff from East Bay Community Energy. Vice Mayor Nason and I were at the Sea Level Rise Event held on the bulb. Several of us were at Coffee with the Cops. Yes, the Resource Fair was amazing. And then I was at the White Elephant Sale on Saturday, and again, it was a wonderful event put on by the senior center. I attended the Everyone Home Leadership Board, where we're, you know, looking for about $70 million a year for affordable housing, if anyone wants to donate. I was at the police department, department meeting last night, and also the Chamber Mixer. Do we have a city manager report?
Just a quick update, May is Bike Month, so it would be a great opportunity for those that ride bikes to try out the new painted lower portion of Marin Avenue. It now has a fairly safe, safer bike lane, so please get out and enjoy Bike Month. We also have the Bike About Town, which will be on May 18th at 6:30, meet at Bikes on Solano. It's a great way to get out in a safe way with your community and ride around town on a bike. I also wanted to just give a little bit more recognition to one of the items on your consent calendar, the Play Like a Girl event on May 20th in Memorial Park. This is a new event for our Recreation Department promoting girls' sports. It will be an informational event, a lot of hands-on opportunities, there'll also be a raffle for a free sports camp. It's for girls primarily ages 2 to 17, but everyone is, of course, welcome. And lastly, I just wanted to give another plug for our website, to make sure that people stay connected. We have another great feature, which is our e-news. If you go to our website, you go to the main page to news, and over here, you go down to the e-newsletter. If you sign up here, it comes directly to your inbox, so when you don't know what's going on in Albany, this is a great way to find out at your fingertips. That's it, thanks.
Okay, and I do have two other announcements. I want to remind folks about this, I want to hold this yellow card that we got in the mail. It talks about parcel tax exemption, renter rebate, and applications must be postmarked by June 1st, so if you got this in your mail at home, you might want to look at it, see if you qualify for any of these discounts. Also, Congresswoman Barbara Lee will be hosting a town hall or having a town hall next Monday, May 14th, at the community center between 7:00 and 8:30, and everyone is welcome to come and meet the Congresswoman. Okay, that takes us to 8-1, Public Opinion Survey Presentation. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, I'd like to welcome our consultants. Brian Godby is here tonight to provide a presentation on the public opinion survey that the council authorized to provide some level of information and feedback to the council on voter support for possible measures on the November 2018 ballot. And I will defer to Brian, because he provides a much better presentation on this than I can.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brian Godby, I'm pleased to be here this evening to give you an overview of the survey that we recently conducted for you. So, to begin with, a brief overview of what you probably already know, the purpose of the survey was to gauge importance of local issues, to look at satisfaction with the city's overall provision of services, to assess voter support for a sales tax extension measure, and also a parcel tax measure to maintain park and open space facilities. We also wanted to prioritize projects and programs that could be funded with the proceeds from these measures, to test the influence of a variety of different kinds of informational statements, and look at the rate at which voters might support the parcel tax measure. There's also, backing all this up, a wealth of demographic information, which is designed to help us validate the accuracy of the sample. In terms of the methodology, it's changed a little bit since we were last here in 2012, when at that point, we did cell phones and landlines. We're now doing text invitations to online surveys, which people take on whatever device they read their texts, as well as email invitations to the online survey as well, and that's become critical, as you can see from the breakdown there. The phone calls, landline, and cellphone are a small portion, whereas the online have become tremendous. It is still a stratified sample based on the voter file, so we're still getting the appropriate demographics, and we're not just getting the convenient sample of who's taking it online. The sample universe that we were looking at was the November 2018 voters in the city of Albany. We were in the field from the end of March until the beginning of April. The average phone survey was 20 minutes long. We don't know how long the online surveys take, because people can start and stop them. But what we do know is they hit the final submit button 24 hours a day, which is great from our perspective, because we're now getting people on their schedule rather than on ours. We completed 368 interviews total, and that gives us a margin of error of 4.99%, 5% in round numbers. Jumping into the data, the first question, or set of questions, really, that I mentioned at the outset was the importance of issues in the city of Albany. And what we did is we asked all of these items that you see here on the chart in a random order, and then asked for each one, are you extremely, do you think it's extremely important, very important, somewhat important, or not at all important? Because there's a lot of different percentages, and it's hard to tell the intensity when you look at just the raw percentages. you look at just the raw percentages. What we do is we do a mean score, which seems a bit abstract, but it's actually a better way to rate these items vis-à-vis each other, where we take into account not only the gross percentages in each of the categories, but also the relative intensity. So, we do that by assigning numeric values, and you see them across the bottom of the chart. Extremely important is a 3, a very important 2, somewhat important 1, not at all important 0, which gives us a scale that ranges from 0, if everybody were to have said not at all important, up to 3, if everybody were to say extremely important. That, of course, never happens on either extreme, but we fall in the middle, and that's what you see here. We also look at a statistical difference of .2 from high to low to define the tiers that you see here. And what that means is that statistically, the items in a tier are technically tied. There are numeric differences, clearly, but statistically, there is no difference with the error rates that we talked about earlier. So, in our top tier, we have preventing crime and emergency preparedness at 2.26 and 2.15 on our intensity score. And if you want to look at the percentages, if we were to add the extremely and very important together, the top one for preventing crime is 84%, at least very important. Emergency preparedness, while it's not on the slide, is about 78%. Our second tier is safe routes for bicycles and pedestrians, regular maintenance of city parks and open space, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and addressing environmental issues. In our third tier, we have protecting and restoring the creek areas, improving street trees that compose the city's urban forest, and restoring the habitat quality and fire resilience of the Albany Forest. And then we have the other items that you see of lesser importance on the list. Excuse me. The next question was still in this vein of, what do people think about Albany, before we get into the revenue measures? And this one was the satisfaction with the provision of city services. We simply said, do you think that the city is doing a good job, or are you very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, somewhat dissatisfied, very dissatisfied with the job the city's doing? What we do to analyze this and to compare it with previous data is we add the satisfied and the very, and the dissatisfied together. So, the very and the somewhat satisfied is about 76% in round numbers, and you can see that in the small little chart in the left-hand corner, whereas the dissatisfied is 14% in rounded numbers. The satisfaction is lower than it was in 2012, and that could be two things going on. One, the universe is different. We were looking at presidential voters in 2012, which is a bigger universe. We're looking at gubernatorial voters now, which is a smaller universe. So, there's clearly a difference in the universe. The other thing that we've seen in the last four years, really now, on city services, is that virtually every city in the Bay Area has gone down. Not because the services are necessarily going down, but because we've seen two problems that are going up with the economy, and that's traffic, which you don't have a whole lot of control over, certainly on the freeways, and affordable housing, which you were talking about earlier. And it's, what's tended to happen, well, we didn't get into those two issues here like we do when we're doing a resident satisfaction survey, which covers a lot more ground, but what we're seeing is, whereas 25 years ago, it was the older voters that were less satisfied, now it is the younger voters that are less satisfied, because they're the ones that are in traffic every day, and they can't afford a house closer to where they work. So, there's a lot of ways to cut the affordable housing issue, and that seems to be driving overall satisfaction throughout the Bay Area. But again, it could also be that just the universe is smaller, and that's substantially So, at this point in the survey, we jumped into the two revenue measures, and the first one you see here is the sales tax. The actual wording that we used is in the box on the right-hand side of the slide. It meets the legal requirements under current AB 195, which requires us, obviously, to talk about the rate, which is a half cent, how long it will be in effect, which in this case is until repealed by voters, so that makes it an imperpetuity tax, and provides $1.4 million per year. Those are the requirements. And then we see some of the bullets that we used in the previous sales tax back in 2012. The good news is that the support is at 79%, and that's a great place to be. Even with that 5% error rate, we could be as low as 74, which is certainly positive. That compares a little bit higher to 2012. Difference, again, is the universe, but also, in the 2012 baseline question, we were asking about a one-cent tax, not a half-cent tax, and not an extension of the tax. So, there are some differences between the two of those in terms of the amount and what's, whether we're extending or creating a new one. Obviously, in the election, as you know, we got 79.9. In our second test, actually, we'll see, in our half-cent version, that we actually got the same percentage, so we were right on target, and hopefully, we'll be this time, too. The next question was for the parcel tax measure. This one didn't fare as well, and part of that, we've seen over and over again with our other clients, sales taxes just do better. Part of the reason is the structure of the ballot question. We're asking a tax rate that people have to do the math. A half-cent sales tax means how much to any of us. It just depends on what we spend that's taxable, and we don't know that in the ballot question. Whereas parcel tax says what the amount is per parcel. In this case, $59, and ongoing tax, so it's in perpetuity, raising about $450,000 a year. 69% in round numbers is a pretty darn good place to start, given that they don't know anything more than what we've just looked at here in this ballot question, but obviously, it's not at the 2/3 level and not quite as strong as the sales tax was. But there's more time to see what might happen to that. So, the next set of questions was, again, asked in a random order, and you see here the priority based, again, on one of our mean scores or intensity scores. Scale's a little different than the earlier one. Much more likely is a 2, somewhat more likely is a 1, somewhat less likely is a minus 1, and much less likely is a minus 2. So, again, same rules in terms of tiers. Our top tier is maintaining recreational programs, parks, playgrounds, and open spaces, what is beyond the ellipses that won't fit on the PowerPoint slide. Our second item is maintain rapid 911 emergency response times, then maintain fire, police protection, safety, and emergency response. And finally, in the top tier, maintain city parks, including ballfields, play structures, picnic table, picnic areas, and restrooms. That ranges from 1.05 to 1.88. And in terms of percentages, we go from 75% down to 67%, and that's all pretty good. It's all above the 2/3 threshold. When we get into Tier 2, the items are all below the 2/3 threshold, so while they're important, clearly, and at substantial majorities, they're just not as important as those top five items that I read. The next set of questions is a similar methodology. This is the informational statements that I mentioned at the outset. We actually have this on two slides. The rules are pretty much the same in terms of the methodology, but you'll notice that across the bottom of the chart, the scale is different. It's just much more likely, somewhat more likely, no effect. There's no minus side of the equation. So, what that means is we can still look at the tiers and look at the numbers the same way we have in the previous questions. You just can't compare the numbers apples to apples with that previous one, because it's a different scale. What we have in terms of our top-tier items, in this sense, are the measure will require independent citizens oversight, mandatory financial audits, and yearly reports to the community to ensure that all funds are spent as promised. That's almost always in our top several items across the state as we do these surveys. Second, the previous park and open space bond measure, bond has been repaid, and the assessments will expire. The new parcel tax just continues the improvement and open space of our parks and open space without increasing tax rates. Then, third, these measures will give Albany local control over local funds for local needs. No funds can be taken by Sacramento. That, too, is almost always in the top three. And then we have businesses would pay their fair share in both measures, and the measures would provide a protected and reliable source of local revenue to prevent severe cuts to critical residential services. Almost all of those are, but certainly good in terms of our intensity scale. Four of those five are above the 2/3 threshold, but one is not. But in terms of intensity, it's right up there in that top group. The rest of the items are still all in Tier 1, but they're below the 2/3 threshold, so while they're important and useful to certain people, they're not as valuable overall. This chart just shows the remainder of these items. Again, they're below 2/3, so I'm not going to dwell on them in deference to your time, but you certainly will have them in the presentation to refer to. So, after we have talked about what we may spend the money on and provided all these informational items, we come back to our ballot questions a second time, and we look to see what's changed. Now, it's important to note that the two ballot questions were rotated, which means half of the respondents got the sales tax first, and half of the respondents got the parcel tax first. So, this is the first time we've asked about the sales tax that everybody knows about the parcel tax, because when we first asked about it, while we said, there are local measures on the ballot, let me read you summaries of two, we didn't say local tax measures. So, they didn't know, the people that got the sales tax first, they didn't know that the parcel tax was coming. They just knew another measure was coming. So, what seems to have gone on here, and it's all within the margin of error, so it's really just conjecture, it's not really statistically significant, is we've gone down, and we've gone down 1.9%, 2% in round numbers. We're still at 77% with a 5% error rate. We could be as low as 72%. I think this measure's in good shape. It's important to get out the information about what the money would be spent on in some of those informational items that I talked about, to make sure that the probably yes people stay on board. But as we saw in 2012, we're probably in pretty good shape here. Again, in the 2012 poll, on a second test, at one cent, we were at 74%, so a little lower. When we went down to half percent, we were at 80%, which is virtually exactly what we got on Election Day. So, this bodes well for this measure. The parcel tax measure also went down a little bit. Again, it suffered from the same problem. Half of the people didn't know that the sales tax was coming, and so it goes down, too, and I think that's why. But again, it's well within the margin of error. It's less than a percent decrease, although with a 5% error rate overall, the 68% could be 63%. So, this one is a little bit on the bubble and probably needs some substantial work, both in terms of public information that you can conduct, as long as you're not advocating as a city, but also, it would be a good idea if there was an independent campaign that was, came together, obviously, outside of the City Hall, to advocate a yes vote. And I think that's going to be important to do this, but I think it is still something that you should be thinking about doing. We also looked at a lower tax rate for this, and what's interesting is it just doesn't seem to help. I mean, it's within the margin of error, so it could be the same, but at 68% in round numbers, rounding up in this case, rounding down in the previous example, there just isn't enough difference to say you should go at $49. And I think that's significant, because usually, when you cross below the psychological ceiling of $50, 50 to 49, there is a difference, but we're not seeing it here. So, I don't think it means that you need to go lower. I think it means if you need $59, I think that's a fine rate. But again, you're going to have to, you know, do your, do the hard work of getting the information out to people that they need, both in terms of the informational, public information campaign, as well as a potential independent effort. Finally, to just really repeat what I've been talking about, there's a very solid base of support for the sales tax, and I think it stands an excellent chance of being successful. We're at a slightly lower rate for the parcel tax. We already talked about the numbers, so I won't repeat those there. In terms of the top features of the measure, I think that's what the key focus for any sort of public information or independent campaign needs to be on, that these measures will, in total, do these things, because, and you have to really talk about them together, because you can't run a yes-on-A campaign and then a yes-on-B campaign. You really need to talk about them at the same time, so mixing some of these features together is important. The top informational items are mostly accountability measures, so the independent citizens oversight, and then skipping down to the next page, the money is protected and can't be taken by Sacramento. Those kind of things apply to both as well, and are important pieces of information, along with the others that I skipped over to get out to the voters. So, in sum, given that these findings, our conclusions are that you should continue the process to put these two measures on the ballot this fall, and as long as you get the information out about both, and particularly the parcel tax, we think they will be successful. That's my presentation for this evening. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there questions from council?
So, just one question. You mentioned about campaigns for these measures, that you wouldn't want to have separate campaigns. If there were campaigns, you'd, they'd be a campaign for both, it'd be a campaign for both measures?
Yeah, vote yes on A and B, or whatever the actual ballot.
Okay, because that's the more successful way of doing it?
Yeah. Yeah, what you don't want to do is pit them against each other. And without a, without an independent campaign, it's very easy, and one that's run collaboratively, it's very easy for voters to say, well, I like this group of things, and I'll vote yes for that, and vote no on the other one. I don't think that's necessarily going to happen here, given the numbers, but I think it's the best way to run a campaign. Thank you.
And since they're both continuations of existing taxes, there's a unified measure.
Yeah. That's certainly built into the sales tax measure. It's a little harder to build that into the parcel tax, so that's part of the information that you need to get out there, is this is no new taxes for both of them. Right.
Yeah, I guess this is a very speculative kind of question for you, but this measure that, as I mentioned, made reference to it, that the Business Roundtable is trying to get on the ballot and may get on the ballot in November, that's not a for-sure thing yet. But would you speculate on what effect that might have on the voting public? Because that's going to be pushing this idea that cities are out of control, and we're probably taxing too much, and that's why we need this stopped.
Yeah, most of us in the polling business think that it will be on the ballot. They've got a substantial number of signatures already that they've reported, so I think that's going to happen. I mean, one of the things that we did, that were built into the informational statements, is testing things like that, what happens if there are other measures out there. And so, that's baked into those second tests that we looked at. We didn't really talk about the details, but, so, I'm not too concerned about that. I'm also not concerned about it in Alameda County particularly, because as you think about how the Business Roundtable is going to spend their millions of dollars, they're not going to target the Bay Area media market. I mean, that's a losing proposition for them. They're going to go after the Central Valley, they're going to go after the mountains, they're going to go after Orange County and San Diego County and the Inland Empire, and spend their money there. There's no percentage for them to spend substantial amounts of money. I mean, certainly, they'll have a ballot argument in the voter handbook, but you're not going to see a huge television campaign, which is what they'd have to do.
So, it, it, it may pass, or hopefully not, but it may pass, but it wouldn't necessarily affect local ballot measures, and it sounds as if we're into that supermajority level of voter return.
Yeah, we are, and that's the key thing, because the catch in the transparency measure, which is what they're calling it by the Business Roundtable, is that it's retroactive for general taxes back to January 1st of 2018. Now, there's a group of city attorneys that think that's unconstitutional, and not just state constitution, but U.S. constitution. I'll leave it to your city attorney to comment on whether he thinks that. But there are, there's a growing number of people that believe that. So, that's part of the problem, and it requires that anything that doesn't, that passes, any general tax that passes, has to be back on the ballot to be revalidated in the subsequent election. In your general sales tax, we're well above the 2/3 threshold, so that probably wouldn't be an issue here. But I went back to this page. The other thing that it requires in sort of the fine print is that we no longer say, and other general city purposes. It now requires, or would require, that we have this last bullet you see here, other unrestricted general revenue purposes. And that's very specific language that comes right out of that measure. And so, we're sort of thinking ahead to protect you from that, so they can't go after you and say, well, you didn't say unrestricted general revenue purposes, whatever exactly that means in their minds. So, I think we're protected on both of these. The parcel tax is a special tax, so it doesn't come under that regulation anyway, and has to get 2/3 to be successful, so.
Thank you.
And are we going to get a copy of your presentation, or can we get a copy? Thank you. Hey. Thank you. No other questions from council? We'll open it up to the public. That would be you, Brian.
Oh, boy.
Anything? Michael, did you have any questions? Okay. So I'll bring it back to council for final comments. So onward.
Just do it.
Yeah, I was going to say, we don't need a motion now, we just?
No, no, simply information at this point. What you do have on your staff report in terms of next steps, receiving this presentation was part of the information process for the council and for the community. The next step will be to really dive a little deeper into what the parcel tax looks like, and we will have a different discussion on that, tentatively scheduled for May 21st.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
And that takes us to 8-2, Emergency Operations Plan Adoption. May we have a staff report, please?
Good afternoon, or evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, we have adoption of our Emergency Operations Plan. I'd like to introduce a consultant who I've been working with for a couple of years to make this plan finalized, even though it's a living document, Brenna Howell with Howell Consulting. And Brenna has many, many years of emergency planning experience, as well as instruction at all levels within local and state government. And what we have for today is, it's our first formally adopted plan that's been adopted as an Emergency Operations Plan by the City of Albany. Previously, we adopted SIMs and NIMs, which was required in 2006 to be adopted on how we operate in emergencies, but wasn't specific to emergencies within the city that we respond to. The plan is in response to extraordinary emergency situations. It's participated by all departments. We pass this around. Every department has a responsibility. If you look in the Emergency Operations Plan, you can see that, since we're a small city, there's a lot of involvement with each and every department throughout the city. It also involves a lot of citizens' involvement. And again, this is a living document that is not meant to stay the way it looks today, that it should be changed routinely. Anytime that there's a change that we've learned in emergency responses across the nation, different contact information, so this will be updated as needed on a regular basis and should not be a stale document. And I'd like to also thank Tim Smizer, who's not here tonight, Lieutenant on the Fire Department, who really has worked hard to help me to accomplish a lot of these tasks that I couldn't do myself, and as well as the fire staff who adjusted their schedules around so we could have all hands on this document and work to accomplish this, you know, while they were on duty to do that. So with that, we have a presentation, and we'll go. Okay, so what is an Emergency Operations Plan? It defines the scope of preparedness, emergency management activities, assigns responsibilities, authorities, and describes the protection of our population and identifies the resources.
Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for having me here tonight. So these plans, really, what is an EOP? An EOP, I'll try to not talk in acronyms to you tonight, because that's really my second language in this profession. And part of the reason why jurisdictions have emergency operations plans is because one of the goals of the federal government after 9/11 was to speak in common terminology. So we try to stop speaking in acronyms, but what our acronyms mean in this plan are, that could be similar to other acronyms that we see in government industry. So that's just a little sidebar about that. But really, after 9/11, emergency operations became a focus. There were issues with coordination after 9/11, and so Homeland Security Presidential Directives 5 and 8 really kicked off that coordination of streamlining emergency plans throughout the country. The foundation of this document is really the responsibilities and authorities of the jurisdiction. So it's outlining at a high level what the city is responsible for in an emergency, how they have to respond in that emergency, and how they're going to carry out the recovery, which is, you know, the response to an earthquake is going to last us a couple of weeks, but the recovery is going to go on for about 13 years. I think they closed out Northridge 13 to 15 years after that disaster actually happened. It covers the whole emergency management cycle, which is really mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And there were two things up on the previous presentation that stood out to me, and one was a mitigation measure. It was the earthquake retrofit of the Veterans Hall. That's mitigation. That's going to make that building structurally sound so that less people could potentially be harmed in a disaster. The other thing that I saw in that presentation that I thought was great, and is great job security for consultants like me and emergency professionals and planners like the chief here, is that the public preparedness, they wanted to see that continual planning and public preparedness. And so that's really what the crux of planning is. It's that whole community. We want to bring in all facets, government, business, citizens, schools, everything into the planning process, so that everybody has a pretty good idea of how we're going to respond and recover to an emergency. We have systems in California that we need to follow. The Standardized Emergency Management System, or SEMS, that was started after the Oakland Hills fires in 1995. Senator Petrus's house burnt down to the ground, and he pushed this legislation that basically said that California was going to respond in this management system. This is what this plan lays out for you. This is how we're going to respond. It also describes other requirements that are needed to be in compliance with the federal and state guidance. Okay, next slide. The structure of the plan. So this plan is structured, again, there's a document called the comprehensive, Federal Comprehensive Preparedness Guidance, that the feds developed after several hurricanes across the country, and again, 9/11, that basically tells jurisdictions, county, city, the state, how they want their plans structured. This is done nationally now. Plans are structured in three different formats. The traditional planning format is the format that we chose for you guys. And so what you see on the slide behind me is that the Emergency Operations Plan, or what we call a basic plan, is that 30,000-foot-level document that explains what you have to do. The support annexes, the hazard-specific appendices, and then support functions are all documents that spawn off of that master plan, but it's all really one plan. So everything is coordinated. It's coordinated with the county of Alameda and also the State Emergency Plan. And let's go to the next slide.
The next slide gives an example of Emergency Operations Center Annex, how things work. And as you can look to the right side of that, that's how our command structure's set up, how each part of the emergency response will fit in with planning, with logistics, with operations. And they communicate this information to our Emergency Operations Center to identify what's needed. We order the resources either internal or from the county, from the state, from the federal government, depending on how big it is. We mobilize all of our units. We check our units in, and then we start the recovery process after that. And then we seek reimbursement, which is, this plan's required to seek reimbursement through the federal government. So this is a required plan if we, should we want to be reimbursed. And then we regenerate back into our inventory of our resources and the equipment and personnel that we used to get ready for possible future incidents.
It also, the EOC annex is a really important aspect of this plan, because it really describes the coordination processes that have to happen in an EOC. There's a planning process in the EOC that if it doesn't happen, the EOC will fail and the response will suffer because of that. And so it's all about the information, the resources, and the personnel that the city needs to attain from other governments to support the field response. That's really what we're here for in the EOC, is information, coordination, and resources, not tactical response. We don't direct and tell police and fire how to do their jobs, or public works how to do their jobs from the EOC. We support them from the EOC with our city resources, with the authorities that are vested in the city manager. She actually, through a proclamation of emergency, has the powers of the governor bestowed upon her, and it's in municipal code. And it also, the last thing I want to say that's important about the EOC, and it's becoming more and more ever today than anything, is the information that comes out of the EOC to the public. It's on social media. They're going to create it on their own without us unless we tell them what's going on, and we need to tell them early, and we need to tell them often. Otherwise, in disasters like what you saw in the Oroville spillway disaster, or the fires that we've had here in California that have been devastating, if we don't get control of that stuff in the EOC early and start putting out information, we're going to have a hard time in our response and relaying messages to the public. So next steps for the city. It's really training, exercising, planning. That's really what the next steps are. Staff participate in multiple training opportunities throughout the year. You guys have a great, great wealth of resources in the emergency management world here in the Bay Area. We have a UWASI, or an Urban Area Security Initiative, that brings in millions of dollars, and all they do with that is help you plan, help you train, and help you exercise in an emergency. And Chief is aware of all of these opportunities, and I think he has some plans for the future for that. And so I'll let you talk about some future trainings.
Yes, so some of the future trainings, once we adopt this plan, we're going to have a tabletop exercise, which is basically a small group of department heads, and we have a small emergency, and we brainstorm, how we're going to handle this, who we'd call, how we're going to structure that, and to exercise our plan, sitting at the table in a small group. And modify our emergency response plan if that's what's needed, after we try to identify issues that weren't able to be solved in our plan. Do we change our plan? Is it a training issue? Or whatever it may be to efficiently operate. And then we will step up, which is a large-scale exercise, which is kind of a city-wide exercise with citizens and all members of the community, and we will do probably a half-day, fairly active simulated drill that will build off of our tabletop exercise into a large-scale incident within our city, and may incorporate other agencies that are near us that we would use, Berkeley, or possibly El Cerrito, or Richmond, or whoever would like to participate in that plan. And that would be volunteers, CERT members, block captains, to get them involved, and we would do an after-action plan to see, does our plan really work the way it's supposed to, or do we need to modify our plan? And some of the other trainings, I'm going to try to meet with each department head that's responsible for their certain activities or their areas, and ask them if they need additional training, if they need some classes, you know, what can I provide them as a resource? And that will probably happen, most likely, after we do an exercise to see where those needs are, whether it's the logistics, whether it's finance, whether it's planning. And many of our departments have took the opportunity to go to this free training through UWASI, this offer these classes locally for, ever since, you know, I've been here the last four or five years, and really in-depth, specific classes. So we hope to take advantage of those classes because they're free as part of this grant process. And when I see them come out, I do forward them to the responsible departments if I think it would be beneficial. And I know that our public works has participated in that. Finance has participated in quite a bit. Police and fire do have a lot of that as part of their standard training exercises through there. So it's an ongoing process, ongoing training. It never stops. I mean, education continues forever. So that's what our plan is. We will relay our findings and improvements and so on and so forth to our city manager to relay to you as council members, and to relay to our community on how we could possibly be more effective in mitigating these emergencies before, during, and after. This here, we're part of a larger system. We start out small. We're a small agency or city, and most likely, if it's a significant event, we're going to rely upon outside resources. So we're going to communicate our requests through the county of what resources we need. If we need 20 tractors, we're not going to be able to provide 20 tractors, so we're going to send our information to the county Emergency Operations Center and make requests. They're going to weigh those requests out from everybody who's going to be making these requests, from all the cities or jurisdictions around us, and see what they could fulfill that information. These plans are made to start from small to large, and each organization or city builds upon the same templates that have been required throughout the state, has found that not every city or jurisdiction can do their own thing. When it steps to the next level, you have to be able to transition very quickly and under the same levels and types of resources. So when you say, "I need a type-one engine," everybody in the state knows what a type-one engine is. Type-six engine, "I need a boat team." "I need a task force of whatever it may be, structural engineer certification." So we're all operating under the same, you know, identification as what it's been. And California luckily has been doing this for many, many years with the wildfires, and this has just kind of transitioned for people to say, "That wildfire, you know, has worked pretty good." The way that we order resources and call up engines and cities, just send them within a few hours of each other. Sometimes it doesn't seem like it's that quick, because we have probably half the engines available for fire response during wildfire than we did 20 years ago, just due to interest in other cities participating in that. Some people have downsized their cities, so it's become more and more a challenge, and there's stuff just being presented to legislation at the state to allow us to get back our forces to what it was back many, many years ago. And, you know, a lot of this stuff that's being done is really, it's being coordinated by the Fire Department, but a lot of this has, every department has their hands on it. I mean, the Police Department has, in the annex, has done the evacuation, traffic annexes, the terrorism annexes that they've done in there, even though it doesn't say who's done what. I mean, there's a lot of people who really, behind the scenes, that aren't for the fire service, that are doing a lot of this work. I mean, and a good example, we talked about the website here, and I was going to respond back to the mayor and vice mayor, "Hey, this is great information that comes out in this e-newsletter about disaster preparedness or whatever." Well, you know who really has the biggest part in doing that? And I got to give full credit to Jeremy. He's not in the Fire Department, but that's who makes that happen. And the last one was just superior, without any help from the Fire Department. He took that upon himself and just did it. So it's not a Fire Department sole function. It's everybody. It all comes to, the fire service to coordinate and distribute it out and do that, but it can't be done without the citizens and without every department here, the council in itself. So if you have anything else to add, Brenna, we can take questions. And I know I have some questions that were sent to me, and I did type up answers to all of them, so I believe I'm ready to answer at least the ones that were sent to me earlier on.
Thank you. Are there questions from council?
I submitted one of the ones that perhaps the answer is typed up for, so I'll wait for that.
Let's hear those.
Yes, what is the difference between this, what we're adopting tonight, and the previous one? The previous one wasn't really an Emergency Operations Plan. It was considered an emergency management plan. It basically was adopted because the president said, "You must adopt this way of dealing with..." with emergencies." And it wasn't, it was more of a checklist on the responsibilities of, during an emergency, who would do what. The planning section chief would do all these things, versus this operations, a true operations plan, that basically describes how we are going to mitigate before, during, and after in emergencies, from that aspect. I mean, a wide spectrum of that. So, without setting it two side by sides, it's really, there's just a big difference, and it builds off our hazard mitigation, what is most prevalent for here? And the annexes that you see in there are what's more prevalent here. Could there be other emergencies, an outbreak, and a, you know, public health outbreak? We wouldn't be steering that, it would be the public health department. So, we don't have an annex for that unless we put annex, follow the directions of a measles outbreak from that. So, there's a lot of emergencies that are in there that we just would refer right away to the county or to the expertise with that. But, the main ones that are here, we do have annexes for each one of the more common. We don't have tornadoes, is there a place for tornadoes? We could, but we're going to focus on what is most likely going to happen here.
Thank you, that makes sense.
So, I think I'm the one that sent all the questions. But I think, sort of on the whole, we could kind of combine a lot of things, and I appreciate getting the annexes tonight, and I will be happy to read through them. So, I guess then my question, or it's about timetable. It mentioned several times about training, and staff training, and community training. Can you talk us through a little bit what that, what the timetable for that might be?
Yes, so currently, all employees have to have ICS 100, 200. It talks about emergencies and the chain of command. So, every employee has completed that. Other employees who would be responsible for emergency operations center and much higher level responsibilities have had I-700 and 800. So, that's been completed. We've also had Brenna come in and do emergency operations plan overview to key department heads, and, well, actually, it was more than just department, it was probably 30 or 40 people that have came in, to have that training. So, the next, so the training has started. Additional training that's going to be offered, we're going to develop based upon, we're going to have a tabletop, so we're going to see what more training do we need from our tabletop exercise, and there's always going to be a need for training. And like I said, I will sit down with the department heads and go over all the responsibilities, and see if they need more information, they need resources, they need training with that to do that. And we're going to do functional exercises, tabletop exercises with that, as well as offer routine training that's going to be required to keep our skills and knowledge for that.
So, would you say in the next six months, the heavy lifting will be done, as far as the training?
So, most of the training that's been required, and it's been a fair amount of training, the four classes, the two classes, whatever had to be done, is pretty in-depth amount of training here. So, the next, you know, trainings are going to be specific to each area that's there. So, I envision in the next six months, do you have a tabletop exercise, and within 11 months to a year, have a full functional exercise with that. That's the basic timelines there.
Thank you.
Can I just add something about exercises? Exercises are very time-consuming, and they take a lot of planning. So, once you get past the normal tabletop exercise, where we all just get around the table and talk about a scenario, and what we would do, and maybe what we wouldn't do, once we step into those functional training exercises and full-blown drills, then we get into a lot of money and a lot of time. For jurisdictions that I've worked for, six to nine months just to pull off one, planning. So...
And some of the, another question asked by the mayor there is, was the city council going to be given some training or some information on that? My plan is, once we have this plan that moves forward there, is to have training done for the council that explains why we haven't a plan, why we need these certain components, basically is going to kind of go through the plan and describe as an official, what's important to you, what's required by law, all the ins and outs of that plan, so you'll know as leaders in the community, what specifically is required of you with that. So, there is a class.
Great, thank you.
So, I had some questions sort of to that point. As I recall, under our old system, we had, the vice mayor had the position of being in charge of something. I'm not sure what, the emergency operations. Does that change? This seems as if we are now kind of taking that position and putting that authority into the staff positions that do the fire department and other departments in the city. So, I guess, I guess sort of the general question is, I see that we can declare, we passed something that declares an emergency, but then, do we, as a council, step back, and it's the staff that's kind of running with the ball and making decisions? You know, how involved is the council as the elected representatives in the community here with whatever goes down over time? And also, I guess kind of an addendum question to that, we can declare an emergency, but how do we know when we're over the emergency? And you mentioned the Northridge earthquake took 13 years to rebuilding, and certainly after the earthquake that affected the Bay Area, it took many years to rebuild the bridge. So, you know, at what point does the council sort of step back more into what's going on?
Yeah, I'll answer one sentence, and then I'll let Brenna answer the rest of it. You're correct, are we making a change? And that is, after that, we talk about the emergency operations plan, it was DPAG, and the way that that was set up is that we had a group that would come in and guide and make policy decisions under the vice mayor. So, that has changed in the fact that we have an emergency operations plan that sets protocol, procedure, ordinances, so on and so forth. So, that is, has changed from that, because the city council and fire service and police service, we have a plan now, and we don't rely upon somebody in. They're going to come in, this emergency planning group, and assist before, during, and after an emergency, but they're not going to set policy or anything like that. And then I'll let Brenna talk about how to declare emergency, and what traditionally the council's role is in an emergency.
So...
It's our next agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And I'm not on that one.
Okay.
I will say one thing about that, though. All of these ordinances that were written many, many years ago, and were very updated, and you're seeing jurisdictions, once they dive into the process of updating their emergency plans, they're really taking the responsibility for the proclamations of emergencies and directing the government organization off of the backs of the elected officials, and putting it into the city leadership, the city manager, the fire chief, and oftentimes, the police chief, or the county executive, the sheriff, and the fire chief as well. So, it's standard.
Okay. I guess one other, more minor question in regards to this, you were talking about training. Has there been any thought about trainings going on in the high school? Certainly, we have a couple thousand high school kids who are mostly able-bodied, and I think would be more than willing to participate in some way, so there might be something, not just the adults in Albany, but I think a lot of the high school kids could be taking on some responsibilities.
Absolutely. And the study group that we have, kind of volunteer study group, a brainstorming group that we've, and the mayor has participated in kind of brainstorming what we need to do, what would be beneficial, would take into that concept. Exactly. Of high school students, teaching it in high schools, community outreach. When we had a community outreach, community engagement specialist who reached out and were rethinking that process again, and working with, you know, the city manager and finance to regenerate that, but absolutely wouldn't include instruction in the schools. Instead of fire prevention, we could talk about, you know, disaster preparedness in there. So, everything is kind of on the table to, whatever we have to do it in a hand. So, we've talked about our CERT classes that are eight or nine times that we meet, maybe we have a small Saturday for four or five hours, where we just do some basic. You wouldn't be trained as necessarily a CERT member, but it would be disaster preparedness modules that we could do. And a lot of other cities are doing this, because it's very hard for some people to commit to seven, or eight, or nine different ones. So, we're looking at maybe holding multiple repetitive, one-day or half-day emergency preparedness for the individuals. There's a lot of individuals who would benefit from that, that they just can't come out and commit that length of time to that. So, that's another area that we're looking with that. Absolutely.
Is the online option up again?
For, we haven't traditionally done CERT online, because there's so many hands-on, but we're going to...
Well, there used to be. There was a section on the city website where you could sign up for an online version of CERT training.
Yeah, I'm, since, I don't believe, since I've been here, but like I say, everything is on the table to talk about. I mean, there's no bad recommendation, whatever it may be, and, you know, that's a, I haven't seen that, but you know what, why not? So, we need to look into every option that we have, and like I said, there's some great information out there that other people see that the fire service misses. So, absolutely, everything would, yeah.
Okay, let's, I just have, I think, one more question right now about disaster service workers and employees. And I understand the concept, in a disaster, all hands on deck, everybody does what needs to be done. Is this all clearly spelled out, though, in the various labor contracts?
So, I did look into that. Labor contracts traditionally aren't spelled out specifically with, you know, that specific information, but I did find that it is in, and I'll find this here, "City of Albany, Administrative Procedures Under Employee Responsibilities of Disaster Service Workers, Formulize the Requirements." It also is in the Albany Personal Rules and Regulations. The current federal and state laws supersede the MOU labor contracts. So, there's a lot of state and federal laws that just aren't put into MOUs.
The proclamation really provides that immunity to the jurisdiction for that reason.
I think just the more they know ahead of time...
Absolutely.
Less sort of, "What, I'm doing what?"
You would be surprised at how many employees I find up and down the state that have no idea that they're part of that larger system, and they're required actually to respond if we ask them to.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good to give them a heads up.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Part of our onboarding process for new employees is to inform them of their duties to respond in an emergency situation. And also, to Vice Mayor Nason's question, the online training course is available on our website, there's a link.
Oh, good, good.
Yes, and it's up and active.
Perfect. Are there any other questions from council?
No, just a quick comment. I urge everyone to take a look at the new Haywired scenario, the Hayward Fault. The USGS has done a remarkable presentation about the greatly elevated damage estimates on the Hayward Fault. It's brand new.
Yeah, I'll put this in the form of a question. Will you be updating the city map that appears in the plan? The city map is an older one, which shows the older configuration of the streets inside UC Village.
Yes, we've had some GIS challenges of getting it up and going, and getting our license up and going, so it's up and going. We do have those layers in there. The map that was there was only designed for the boundaries, and not necessarily for the streets. So, but we will update that, and hopefully, all the streets within that same-sized map. If not, we can make a one-page map of all of the city streets, if we can in there. But it was just showed to illustrate that. But yes, there is a map that needs to be up. I tried to update that map three, four weeks ago, and I found out, once I got in there, that I had to call ESRI, and anyway, it's all ironed out, but this was sent in a couple weeks ago. Yes, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll open it to the public. Any questions, comments?
You know, I would say it's great you have the CERT training online, but you should take the class in person, it's really fun, and you'll meet good friends.
Thank you. Are there any final comments from council? Seeing none, could we get a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-53?
So moved.
Second.
Hold the council, please. Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid? Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you both for all your work, and really thrilled to have this.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing. Public hearing on ordinance number 201803, amending Chapter 2, Sections 2 to 16 of the Albany Municipal Code, Emergency Organizations and Functions, first reading. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, this follows up on the agenda item we just heard, and some discussion preliminarily on this. We have a dated section in our municipal code from 1995 that references a disaster policy advisory group, which, as in the material you just received, really just doesn't fit in the current organizational framework for how we do disaster preparedness and overall organizational structure with regard to that nature. So, what you'll see before you is a draft change to that ordinance. I want to highlight one thing that was added, which is the importance of community engagement. So, what we are proposing is that actually be included as ordained here, that the city, and primarily city staff and departmental staff, are obligated to continue that effort in engaging our community for disaster preparedness. It's a topic that some of us put on the back shelf, but we really need to keep front and center, and this helps us do that throughout the community. You will also see what is stricken from the ordinance is the references to the disaster policy advisory group. And it references the plan that you just adopted, basically, in a general term, in case that plan evolves over the course of the next 10 to 20 years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and come back for final comments. Can I get a motion in?
Just quickly, this advisory group, did it ever function well? Why did we shut it down?
Did it ever function, or did it ever function well? Well, you know, over the course of the years, it evolved over time to the staff and the council members that took party to it. In terms of actually developing substantive policy, I haven't seen any production of that. It was more of a conversation about how to get things moving, we should do this, we should do that, and now, we've actually done that through this plan. So, I think we've taken some leaps and bounds ahead of that, and now, the focus really would be on engaging in our marching orders.
As the currently serving vice mayor, I am thrilled to see this ordinance change, the DPAG being replaced by the DEPUBAG, whatever it's called, you know, and all the acronyms, but this is a good change.
I didn't know you spoke French, Rochelle.
Rochelle, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to make the motion to move the, which I don't have open right now, here in front of me, to move the ordinance as proposed by the staff.
It's actually first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, my apologies.
No problem. And I'll second that, having sat in on far too many DPAG meetings. Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss? Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid? Yes, and the motion carries. This then brings us to other business, announcement of events, future agenda items. Anyone have any future agenda items?
Yes, I'd like to request with no particular hurry, with no particular hurry, that we at some point address the policy for waiving various fees for events.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next city council meeting will be on Monday, May 21st. Tonight, we're adjourning in memory of five people who lived in Albany and impacted many lives in a variety of ways. So let's take a moment to remember Mel Ayers, longtime Albany resident and former city employee, and father of former Albany police officer Mike Ayers, Susan Ford, longtime resident and former Albany High School girls tennis coach, Ray DeYoung, longtime resident and member of the 1949 and 1950 Cal Rose Bowl teams, Albany Police Captain Mel Boyd, who rose through the ranks from as higher as patrolman in 1962 to when he retired as captain in 1988, and also Rafael Fuentes Lee. And with that, we are adjourned.